Okay, we are recording.
Okay, this is the City of Boulder Planning Board meeting for April 7, 2022, and so the swearing in takes place, which I think will take place right away. And I think maybe at this point, I'll invite Hella Panovic to move ahead with swearing in of our new members.
Thank you, John. This should be pretty quick. So I'm thinking we can do this all together, the three of you. Just repeat after me and I'll say the oath out loud and divide it up into smaller pieces. And you just all speak at the same time if that works for you. All right, why don't you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Boulder.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Boulder.
And faithfully perform the duties of the office of a member of the planning board.
And faithfully perform the duties of the office of a member of the planning board.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
That's it. Thank you.
Hey Cindy, George is on the, he's ready to be, he's on.
I know, I'm trying to promote him. I'm aware. Okay.
Okay, congratulations to our new members. I hope this is a lot of fun for you in addition to all the pain it will incur.
John, before we move on, I need to do the protocol for the meeting, which I completely forgot to do.
Oh, okay. Why don't you move ahead with that then?
Okay, my apologies to board and to staff and the members of the public. Thank you for joining Planning Board. As always, we enjoy having everyone here. We are aiming to keep these meetings respectful and orderly. As such, we have some specific protocol for our meeting. I'm going to share my screen. And so bear with me. Can everyone see my screen? The city is, I hope everyone can see my screen.
Yes, we see it.
The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and the board, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. You can find more information about this on our website. And the link is here. If you need that link later, just ask me in the Q and A. On our examples of rules of decorum found in our Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during our meeting. And testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, dehumanizing language, racial epitaphs, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by. And individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak. And currently, we are only using audio testimony. So therefore, video will not be allowed. And before we get to public speaking, I will go through the rules for that. And since we are in a webinar situation, we, I'm trying to figure out how to get out of this. I'm sharing my screen. Can't figure it out. I apologize. I'm looking desperately here. If you need to, as a member of the public, you will use the Q and A. And know that the board will not be reading your questions, so any questions should only be related to technical issues. That should not be related to any matters of the matter at hand. Only technical issues. So with that, I'm trying to desperately get get out of a shared screen. I've lost the ability.
While you're working on that Cindy, I'm going to remind anyone but particularly one of our illustrious board members that when you're not speaking, to try and remember to put yourself on mute.
I apologize. I do not see how to unshare the screen.
Cindy, if you move your mouse, do you see your Zoom panel? The screen share should be in your Zoom panel.
It is gone. And I am.
Are you still a host of the meeting Cindy or someone else?
Yeah, I'm the host, yes. And I don't understand why I can't unshare. This is bizarre. Oh, shoot.
Is your frame, the panel might be at the bottom of your frame and it might be offscreen.
There is nothing on the screen. I'm going to. This is so, oh, I see, it's, okay, there it is. I apologize. Disappeared, my mistake. Sorry, guys.
No worries, we have it now.
Great. Thank you so much. Sorry about that. And I turn it back over to you, John.
All right, thank you Cindy. That was, I'm glad we managed that. So the next item on our agenda is the nomination and elections of new Planning Board Chair and Vice Chair. So I think we'll open the nominations now if anybody has somebody they'd like to see in that position. Sarah?
I'd like to nominate John to be Chair. And I think you don't need a, I'm just looking at Helen's things. I don't think we need a second.
Okay, would anybody else like to make a nomination?
I'll second that if we need one. I'd also nominate Sarah as Vice Chair.
That would be good. Any other nominations for Vice Chair?
I don't think you guys have to verbally accept, but do you accept?
I do accept. And Sarah, what about you?
I would be honored.
Great. Well, so I think we need to make sure that everybody agrees. Maybe we'll take a vote right now. So first, let's vote.
First, there is a motion to close the nominations.
Oh, that's.
And that requires a second, and then after that, you vote.
Okay, let's see if there's any motion to close the nominations here.
I move to close the motions.
Okay.
Excuse me. I move to close the nominations.
And I will second ML.
Okay, very good. Okay, so now we can move to have the election. So all in favor of?
You first?
Yes, go ahead, Hella.
You have a vote on closing the nominations.
Oh. How presumptuous of me. Okay. So all in favor of closing the nominations, please raise your hand. Looks like there's unanimous agreement. George, I can't see.
Yeah, sorry, I'm having a little bit of connection issues, but yeah, I also agree.
Okay. All right, nominations are closed for Chairman and Vice, I should say Chair and Vice Chair. So we'll take a vote. All those in favor of Gerstle for Chair, please raise your hands.
Aye.
Thank you. And those in favor of Sarah as Vice Chair, please raise your hands.
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you for the honor.
Just if I may add, for the record, that the anonymous votes for both Chair and Vice Chair were made.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so we'll move ahead. There is now an opportunity.
Sorry, don't we vote for Secretary as well, even though it's kind of perfunctory? No?
We haven't in the past, although if you'd like to propose that as a change to our procedures, we can certainly consider that.
It's just other boards have.
We're very spoiled here, Mark, in that we have a lot of staff support. And so the secretary function and minutes function is filled typically by Cindy. And so I think perhaps Helen or other board members will have more expertise than I do, but I think that's why we haven't had that role in the past. Is because we are spoiled for resources here and have wonderful staff support.
Yeah, officially, the Planning Director is actually the Secretary and has been for many years. And the board hasn't actually voted on it since I've been assisting the board.
Well Cindy needs to talk to the Planning Director. Why is Cindy doing the minutes?
Delegation.
Voted for Cindy no matter what, so I just, I just thought it was something we needed to do. And we did that on tap for whatever reason, even though it was always Meredith. We voted for Meredith and when we renewed every year. So anyway, carry on.
Okay.
I think this means that Cindy is the Planning Director, so congratulations Cindy.
I personally am delighted to support Cindy for Secretary. Okay, very good. So we'll move ahead then with the next phase of our meetings, which is a public participation session. And this is a time when we will hear comments from anyone who wishes to deliver them to us on any issue except those which we are dealing with in public hearings tonight. And the only issue that we are addressing in public hearing tonight is the the site and use review for the property located at 770 28th Street. The former Best Western Plus. So if you have any comments on that, please wait until we are dealing with that issue explicitly. But if you have anything else to say to us, now is the time. And Cindy, maybe you want to manage the comments that we'll be listening to in this session.
Sure, I'd be happy to. If you do have a comment to make, as John stated, please raise your hand. You'll go down to the bottom and hover, and you should see a raise hand function. It's about the middle of the bar at the bottom. And we do have one person who's raised their hand so far. We have Lynn Segal. And Lynn, I will mute you right now and we'll give you three minutes to speak. So you should be unmuted now Lynn.
What are you doing to control housing costs in Boulder? What are you doing? Think about that, folks. Think real hard. Approving every subsidy to every developer, you know, Marpa House, that was a bad start. Now the university owns Boulder. Hotel, what we're going to talk about later tonight, Best Western, yeah. What did they do? They turned each of those hotel rooms, they just put in a hot plate and then they rented out individually, just like they did at Marpa House, Sarah. Just like at Marpa. We want a playground so that you can rent a bedroom for each kid individually in that space. You've got to figure out the business model of these things. Hotel Row on 28th Street, it's all for CU. CU owns Boulder. CU and the football team. You know, this is just not, so not okay, because it spreads everywhere. The Millennium, Olive, Folsom and Pearl, it's everywhere. It's like worse than the worst virus. And it's everywhere in every town, and the homelessness goes up and up. And there's no money for open space, and there's no money for anything, and there's $1,000 per square foot down at Apple in the Flatirons Business Park. How did that happen? How are you going to get affordable commercial in East Boulder sub-community when you've got $1,000 square foot Apple space? You're not. In the same way that you're not when you approve every of Coburn's, the Balsam, you know, 27th and Pine, that all of these developments. I mean, the other row is right across from the Boulder Chamber of Commerce. All those $3 million condos. And you know what it's like to fight your property taxes at the Board of Assessment Appeals? Well, I'll tell you, looking through hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of assessed values to find one that's not, you know, that's six digits instead of more. It's just not happening. The future for me is lost here. Because it's all million dollars. And then where does that property tax go? It's up until midnight the other night at City Council for a library district. Because guess what? Gun Barrel, you know, Spine Road, you okayed that. Why do you do this? They don't have the infrastructure. They don't have the rec center. They don't have the library. Why should I pay for the library when I've got my taxes going up $850 a year? Where's that money going? You want 23 more dollars from me? Each month? For a library district tax? And I have to feel like I hate libraries? No. Where's the money? Follow the money. And I'm whispering, I'm not yelling. Follow the money. Stop already. Done.
John, you're muted.
Thank you. Lynn? Are there any others who wish to speak on this or any other topic except the 28th Street project?
If anyone else would like to speak tonight, please raise your hand. And I don't see other hands raised, John, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have a discussion of dispositions and call-ups. We have three call-up items in front of us tonight. I think you've all seen them on the material for this meeting. Does anyone wish to call any of these up? Okay, seeing, oh, Mark, are you wanting to call any?
Okay, this is just like procedural naivete here. So I studied up on these items. I read the packet as these items were called up out of something else, and so I was anticipating a discussion slash presentation on these items. If I wanted to call up an item, I could do that now, but when would we actually discuss and deliberate that item?
Well, the way we usually do this is if you have any questions on any of these call-up items, you can feel free now to ask staff anything you're unclear about. And after that little discussion which you may have over any questions you have, then you can make a decision to call it up or not. So you can feel better informed about the decision you're making. So feel free, if you have any questions on these items, to inquire of staff and learn more about them.
I do, so if that's okay, I'll just put forth a couple of questions for staff that they may or may not be able to address on the four-mile creek crossing. This is a particular. I always hate it when you were like, well, this is of interest to me because I use this, but I think it's a well-used creek crossing that I am very familiar with. I ride my bike through there all times of year. And so I was looking at this. I was, one, happy to see that after 10 years, or almost 10 years, whether it's OSMP or Parks and Rec, whomever, actually wanting to address this particular issue, which is this creek crossing, which used to be a little concrete bridge. The concrete bridge is still there, but it's completely filled in by gravel and so forth because the stream bed changed in the 2013 flood. So my question is, is based on the memo, I couldn't really tell what the crossing would look like for a user, whether that user was a cyclist or a child or an elderly walker or whatever. So I'm curious if someone can describe to me or point me to something that I might be missing in the packet for what this crossing would look like.
It's a great question, Mark. Thanks very much. We have Kristen Shepherd with us tonight, the city's floodplain engineer. So I'll turn it over to Kristen.
Hi, Mark. Nice to meet you. It is a good question. I have to chuckle a little bit because it's, I realized that I gave you all the engineering calc's and all the engineering drawings and it doesn't always tell you what it's going to feel like or look like when you're walking on it. So essentially what it is, is large Boulder riprap, so big rocks, and then that's covered with like a finer grained gravel and sand on the top. So it'll essentially just look like a dirt path, but a little bit raised with some side slopes. And I believe the side slopes have exposed riprap with some geofabric over top to help with some vegetation growth. So it'll look like a little bit of a raised path with gravel, hopefully some veg growing in the next couple of years as it seeds, take root.
So the riprap and the mat and so forth is not in the stream bed. I guess, are you treating the path to the stream bed, but actually not the stream bed itself?
No, this is, so like you said, the channel has moved, so where the new dip in the channel is, that's where this path will go. So we're not treating anything outside of the stream bed. This will be inside the low point of the channel to help people cross it.
Okay, so if I'm in a low water condition, if I cross there, the sole of my shoe is going to be on a gravel-sized rock? Or it's going to be on this synthetic fabric? Or what will it actually be on?
It'll be on gravel-sized rock, kind of like that, not sand, but silty kind of
Okay.
Small gravel.
Okay, and so that would eliminate, you guys would, you guys, whoever, would remove some of the larger rocks that have been placed there to create a higher water crossing. And any wood or boards or whatever seasonally seems to show up as people try to cross that with seasonal water.
Yes, yes. And like you said, my understanding is currently there are these boulders, so it makes more, it'll be a continuous path as opposed to boulder hopping.
Right, okay. So a cyclist would be able to ride across that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think that answers my questions. I'm not going to call it up.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have questions on any of the other call-ups? ML?
I do have a question. Thank you. Thank you, John. I have a question on the C of fence. And my, I have two questions actually. I'll get to those pages. So my first question is, and it's probably in here and I didn't see it, but does the proposed fence impact the wildlife migration that happens there?
No, it should not. So it's right on the edge of, there's a large corridor and it's right on the, I believe, the eastern edge of it. And it's an OSMP-style fence that they use specifically for these kind of wildlife corridors to help the wildlife usher through the main corridor, but without letting the dogs go back and forth through. So the fence will be parallel to the corridor. It won't be blocking it for the wildlife.
And then my second question, it looks like you, you guys did a lot of mitigation with the dog owners to try to resolve this. And will they, will those owners incur any of the cost of the fence?
I don't believe so.
Okay, well, thank you for answering those questions. I don't feel like I need to do a call-up either on this one, but thank you for answering the questions.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions on the call-ups? Okay, so I think this means that we've concluded that no one on Planning Board wishes to call these matters up. So thank you. All right, so now we'll move to our public hearing item, which is a site and use review for redevelopment of the property located at 770 28th Street, the former Best Western Plus Motor Inn, into a mixed-use project that includes a three-story student apartment building with 96 four-bedroom units, along with a ground-level amenity space, common areas, and below-grade parking. And we'll start out with a staff presentation of this, followed by an applicant comments if appropriate, followed by public comment, if there is any. There'll be an opportunity to ask staff questions after their presentation. And after the public comment, there'll be additional opportunity to ask staff or applicant questions. And then the decision will be taken by Planning Board. So Charles?
Great, thanks so much. I'd like to start by welcoming our new board members. I'm Charles Faro. I'm the Development Review Manager here at the city of Boulder. And I wanted to apologize for not being able to participate in your onboarding and training last week as I was unexpectedly called out of the office for a few days. So I'd like to welcome you all. We'll be spending a tremendous amount of time together. My team makes professional recommendations to the board in this format, among other things. So, and I would like to congratulate John and Sarah in your new roles. It's very exciting. So I'm pleased this evening to turn this over to Elaine McLaughlin. She's a city planner in our office and she'll be presenting staff's recommendation tonight. Elaine?
Great. Thanks, Charles, and good evening, everyone, and welcome to the new members as well. And I'm just gonna share my screen here, so bear with me. I take a minute to get booted up. And just let me know if you're not seeing the presentation. But so I'm just going to go ahead with a brief overview of what we're going to discuss this evening. We'll take a look at the planning process to date and then we're going to spend a little bit of time on the existing site and context, including the built environment, planning and transportation context. I'll have a brief summary of the proposed project. And then there's three key issues that we'll be discussing this evening that are in your packet. So the process to date has been pretty robust. And as some of you were on the board a year ago, concept plan was reviewed in February last year, and that was followed up with council call-up consideration in March, which they did not vote to call it up. Site and use review application was filed in June last year, and since that time, it was reviewed by the Development Review Staff in four rounds of review. Design Advisory Board reviewed the plans in a lengthy four-hour meeting last September. And then that officially brings us to where we are tonight, followed by council call-ups consideration later this month. So as most of you may know, the site is located near the intersection of baseline with Highway 36. And this is as it turns northward and transitions into 28. So as you can see from the image approaching the site from the south on Highway 36, because the highway is elevated near the site, it's pretty highly visible from the roadway. And in the built context, you'll note that aside from the campus across 28th Street, there's primarily higher-density residential to the north and east and non-residential uses like office, retail, restaurants to the south and southeast. There's a number of properties along 28th Street that have redeveloped over the past 10 years or so with urban design that's distinctly different than the previous suburban pattern that was essentially walk-up motels or surface parking lots as you can the previous suburban pattern that was essentially, um, walk up motels or surface parking lots, as you can see from the, the bottom before images. And the impetus for redevelopment, um, actually came from a city initiated comprehensive rezoning of the area about 15 years ago to RH3 that's shown in green. The property owner on this site and the one just to the north, um, in the BT1, um, chose not to participate in the rezoning at the time. And, um, so the property just to the north redeveloped under BT1. Uh, but it was intentionally done, um, to reason this area and create a higher density area across from the campus, really to reduce pressure off single family residential conversions that had been occurring in areas surrounding the university like University Hill, Whittier and Gosgrove. And so this was done in tandem with the adoption of a transportation connections plan. And that was intended to, um, essentially create new, new connections, um, and make the area pedestrian friendly and safe and convenient to transit. It was intended to support all modes of travel. And as you can see from this photo that correlates plan lines with the redevelopment of the various properties, it achieved or implemented most of the connections. And so, uh, about a dozen or more years ago, the city and C dot also made significant improvements along uh, 28th Street focused on alternative transportation that include bike lanes, transit stops, pedestrian underpasses, including one that's just about a block from the site. So the area of the sites not only walkable to campus and services, it's also in a uniquely transit rich area that served not only by RTD buses, but also the CU bus, uh, buff bus. And, um, as you can see in the, the upper left corner there, there's other ride services that are provided by the university. Uh, the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan identifies the land use for this site as transitional business and that's shown at, um, intersections, um, of and along certain major streets. And while identified for less intensive business uses than general business, um, land use, uh, the uses anticipated consist of a mix of uses, including housing. And the zoning, um, consistent with that is transitional business. Again, defined primarily for commercial and complementary uses as well as office. And so more specifically offices permitted by right if it's less than 20,000 square feet and attached residential is allowed by right if it's not on the ground floor facing the street. And in this case, there's six units on the ground floor that face the street. And so it necessitates use review. And we're going to talk a little bit about that this evening as well. Uh, density is determined by a provision of 1,200 square feet of open space per dwelling unit. So it's a fairly open space, um, heavy requirement. Uh, the 3.4 acre site includes that former best, um, western, um, plus motel. It's been vacated as of November. And then on the west side, there was, um, uh, or rather on the east side, there's, um, a building that was attributed to a local architect Hobart Wagner, Hobie Wagner. Uh, there's no plans to change the building, but surface parking lots that are shown will be removed. And then five access points that you see there with the arrows will be consolidated into one access point, as you'll see. And so onto the existing site, um, the applicants proposing a mixed use development that includes, uh, 35 foot tall, um, by right height, uh, 96 unit apartment building with a corner amenity space. And the building is planned with interior courtyard spaces, a rooftop deck with a pool on the second floor, um, above the amenity space, excuse me. And the plan's illustrated total of about two and a half acres of open space. Uh, the existing five story approximately 15,000 square foot office building will remain on the east side. And there's some new open space amenities planned, including an open lawn area and a court sports area along with site furnishings. And as you'll note, the parking is below grade with three stories above. And because of the grades on the site, the parking structure daylights on the east side, but the applicant has wrapped the parking on the side, um, on that side. And, um, you'll note that there's several, um, residential units facing the open space and towards the office. So for key issue one and consistency with the site review criteria, I'll touch on a few of the dozens that are in your pocket. And uh, the first criterion asks if the proposed plan is consistent with the land use map, which we've talked about and looked at and on balance with the BBCP policies. And so in that regard, staff noted earlier that the proposed mixed use is actually anticipated in that TB land use. And then there's several policies that in essence indicate the city's support for a well-designed mixed use project that's compatibly scaled with higher density and in a walkable context, in this case to the university and nearby services. And then the building design criteria asks if the building mass and scale are compatible with the existing character of the area. And as you can see, that proposed two to three, uh, story building has a relatively low stature when you compare it to the adjacent buildings where the U club that's labeled as A there, um, is, uh, 55 feet tall, four stories. Spanish Towers to the northeast shown as B is, um, 55 feet tall and five to six and a half stories. It's pretty, pretty tall. And the C office building just to, uh, the east of the site's, uh, 55 feet and five stories. There's also a single story building across the 28th Street, uh, frontage road. It's housing helpers today. It's an office building. And it's also notable in this image that the existing context has, um, it's a varied, um, and eclectic architecture in the surroundings, really because of the different eras of construction. And so this new building architecturally and in scale will be compatible in the context. And similarly, the building's, um, orientation and configuration also a consideration in the, uh, criteria are compatible and in keeping with the large format apartment buildings in the area. And some of them have internal courtyard spaces, as you'll note from the plan, um, superimposed onto an aerial. So this design criterion asks if the exteriors, um, present a sense of permanence through the use of authentic materials. And so in that regard, um, it's noted that the primary materials include uh, brick, wood and, and metal panel. And there's a metal screen that's, um, intended as an accent used throughout. So for the site review criteria related to the parking reduction, the applicants proposing 158 parking spaces where 350 are required under the code for the apartment and office uses on the site. And that then equates, as you can see by the arrow, to um, a 55% parking reduction. And it's important to note that the applicants also proposing 50 tandem spaces in the parking area, which aren't considered, um, standard under the city's definitions, but will provide for additional vehicle storage. Excuse me, um, also proposed to be built on the site. And I'm going to take a sip of water here. So bear with me. Excuse me, is, um, un-street parking, moped, uh, parking spaces and then what are referred to as transportation network company spaces or TNC spaces for things like Uber and Lyft. So when factoring those into the equation, the parking reduction is actually 32%. The applicant's also providing 360 bike parking spaces, both short and long term, where 204 are required. The site, uh, review criteria for parking reduction, reductions essentially includes, excuse me, the notion of adequate accommodation. And if there's a mix of uses that can share parking, particularly with varying time periods of use, and that the nature of occupancy will not change. And so in that regard, with the intended occupancy primarily for, uh, students, it's important to note that it's been recognized for decades that there's a high alternative mode use among students. And this is cited in the, um, most recent modal shift in the Boulder Valley study that was prepared in 2018. And as you can see, um, from the study, 72% of the time, students travel by bus, bike or walk, and that compares to boulder residents in general at 37% of the time. And so as it can be noted by that travel diary, the use of a single occupant via vehicle or even multi-occupant vehicles for school trips is only 9%. And again, most of that goes to the fact that there's assault mode use. And then it appears to go up to 39% um, outside of school. And so it's important to note that car usage is relatively low amongst CU students and occurs likely on weekends primarily. So essentially there's a need established for, um, vehicle storage in this context. Staff finds the proposed parking layout supports the notion of adequate accommodation through the use of tandem, of the tandem spaces that we talked about for vehicle storage purposes. And while the parking reduction is based on city standards that don't count, uh, the tandem spaces, the use of them in this context can help to achieve the adequate accommodation for occupancy. Um, and also it's important to note the applicants implementing some principles, shared unbundled, managed and paid parking in that, um, the parking's intended to be shared between uses. Um, it's intended to be unbundled from the office tenant's lease and the use of tandem space and spaces requires onsite management of the parking. Parking will also be through a lease agreement with the office tenants. And then in addition, you can see in the lower left there, the applicant's TDM has, um, been looked at as being fairly robust, um, includes secured long-term parking um, for bikes. There's bike and longboard share program, a restroom with, uh, shower for the office. Additional short-term bike racks then is required, eco passes for the office employees, and then that, um, TNC rideshare, uh, dedicated parking. So then for key issue two and the use review for the six ground level residential units facing 28th Street, the criteria asks if the use is uh, compatible transition to the context. And generally non-residential uses such as retail and office are considered higher intensity uses. And so, um, and so is the adjacent arterial roadway, if you think about it, and the university. So as such, the residential in this location and the attached ground floor residential units facing the street can be considered a compatible transition from the residential uses to the north and east. And then those non-residential uses to the south and west. And in terms of, uh, resident, residential compatibility, the six ground floor units are proposed to face the street and will be in keeping with other units, um, next door at the U club. Um, and generally speaking, the office uses will function in the daytime while residential units are occupied at night and on weekends. And so given the site specific context where the western side of the building, um, essentially faces a, a retaining wall for the highway, residential units that face that blank wall in many ways, um, could create some level of privacy in the context. The applicant also is illustrating a fairly generous landscape buffer that you can see, such that the appearance of the embankment, that embankment, um, of the frontage road could be softened. And then, um, finally, staff finds the provision of the, the residential units in this location won't predominant predominantly change the character of the area. Um, and as previously noted, this quarter has had a number of 1960s motels. Residential units and redevelopment in general will likely enhance the existing character of the area, as you can see in that comparison in the before and after. And so then for key issue three, the proposed solar exceptions, um, onto the Spanish Tower site, um, it's northeast of, um, where the building is proposed. And as noted earlier, um, this area of the site has, it was subject to that overlock grading, um, back in the day to establish those, um, motels and create a flat site. And so what has happened is there's about a six foot drop into the parking below. And, um, so the U club and the site are both zone BT1 and they're in solar access area three. As opposed to the Spanish Towers, which is in solar access area two. So that's where we look at, um, any solar shadow encroachment. And in that case, solar access area two is designed to protect uh, solar access principally for rooftops. And so it's measured using a hypothetical 25 foot solar fence for solar access area two. And in the diagram from the project plans, the applicant demonstrates that there's a small encroachment beyond the solar fence and, um, it necessitates that request for the exception. And as you'll note, that the solar shadow cast by that hypothetical solar fence casts the shadow at an approximately 20 degree angle. And that's at December 21st at 2:00 PM, where we look at the longest shadows that exist. For that moment in time, it's a snapshot in time. And so the area of encroachments about six feet beyond that, while parking lots aren't intended for protection in solar access area two, um, and no, uh, 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 building wall also wouldn't be protected if there's ever, um, any building constructed in the area in the parking lot. The solar regs require that, um, the encroachment receive an approval as an exception. But given the fact that, um, within the setback, it's just a small area staff, um, noted that, um, it's a reasonable, um, accommodation for this use that otherwise, um, could be made on the lot and that the building heights planned at, uh, by right height of 35 feet, there's no height or setback modifications. And because the topographic change on the site from the overlap grading, um, it creates the situation, um, and, and thus that all encroachment onto the parking lot. Staff also notes that if the site ever redevelops at a density that's permitted in the RH3 zoning district, um, the encroachment would likely just be on a portion of the wall, um, since that's a rather high intensity, uh, zoning district. And so it would be very difficult to, to have a relatively low building in this location that would be impacted. Little bit complex, but with that, um, staff has offered a motion and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you. Any questions? George?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, uh, thanks for the great presentation. Um, I had a quick question. Uh, the tandem spaces seem very unusual. And my question would be, have you, have, has the developer studied within the same parking area envelope, how much parking they would lose? If it had a normal circulation pattern? So how much total parking would be there? Not, not changing the, the, the gradations or anything like that, but just in the current context. As, do we know that?
I think it's a great question for the applicant.
Okay. All right. So I'll save that for the applicant. Um, and then one other question that I'll, and I'll yield. Around the solar exception, is there anything, um, relevant to the property owner as it relates to this exception? Um, have we received any information from them that they're concerned about it? Is there a requirement to go to them? How, how does that work?
Yeah. So public notification was provided, uh, when the application came in and included the indication that there's a request for a solar exception. And we have not had any public comment provided from, uh, the Spanish Towers. In fact, there was just one email to comment and it was from, a neighbor who is a little bit concerned about the parking. And then there was another neighbor who called me, regarding the parking lot across the street, um, and having some concerns students would park there.
I'm sorry, I have one more, one more question. And it goes back to parking, as you brought it up, which was, um, you had mentioned in the presentation, because the mix of uses, um, and then at the same time, the need for vehicle storage, like the reduction related to the mix of uses. Actually, I, I think, I think, I think you maybe perhaps a, a, a higher reduction is merited, but we'll get to that anyways. But I just want to understand what that meant because it, it appears the garage is set up to store vehicles and that there will be a limited number of parking spaces that will actually be churning. So I actually see that as counter to what was said around the mix of uses. So maybe you could explain that a little bit.
Yeah, actually there's, um, 50 tandem spaces out of, um, about 178 or however many, um, parking spaces there are. So generally speaking, it's a percentage of the overall parking. And the intent is to essentially unbundle the And the intent is to essentially unbundle the parking for the office users. In other words, the office users may not get a parking space, every single one of them. And the idea is, you know, maybe it'll be a merit-based system or what have you with the tenants of that office building. But there may be opportunities for those parking spaces to be vacated that aren't in a tandem configuration. But those tandem configured spaces are really just intended to allow for a longer term or a longer period of turnover. So, you know, the assumption is it's sort of open-ended for that parking structure for folks who want to use it, whether it's office users or students. My understanding too, from the applicant, which will be a good applicant question, is that they've managed these tandem spaces in other apartments that they've built. And so they have a pretty good idea on how they function. And so I think we should also defer some of that to the applicant.
Okay, other question, Lisa.
Yeah, I think this is a question for staff and don't get too nervous applicant when I ask this. But, but looking at this, this project coming back up before us and we saw it before, and then I think back to the Millennium Hotel. And I was just curious to staff, do we have any current or updated figures? I feel like the chamber had them at one point on changes to hotel rooms over time. I'm, I'm just curious, you know, as we see some of these projects change from hotel to student housing, do we have any metrics or are any in development on kind of the change? Because I know we also had a lot of hotels built, so.
You know, at one point, for one of the redevelopment, one of the redevelopments that occurred on one of the former motel spaces, I think it's now called Landmark Lofts, or there's another name for it. But there was some data at that time, but things have shifted and changed. And so, yeah, there's been a number of rooms that have come online in terms of hotel motel. And there's more online than have been consumed by the student apartments. But in general, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I know it's transitioning, of course.
Yeah, no, that, that's a totally fair response. And again, I don't want to make the applicant or staff nervous with that question. To the extent it's feasible, I would love an updated figure like that for the next project. We see that's similar to this. It would just be interesting to kind of get a better insight into what's happening with that. Thank you.
Any other questions, Sarah?
Thanks, John. You may not be able to see, but we all are using the raised hand function. I don't know if you can see that or not on your monitor, just FYI. So Elaine, I just want to, I want to go back to the parking, because I, I think there's some clarification that would be helpful for me. The fifty tandem spaces do not count as a hundred spaces of a hundred and fifty-eight, right? They count as fifty of a hundred and fifty-eight. Is that correct? Okay. But the office building, the applicant has to guarantee, or not guaranteed, there need to be sixty-four built parking spaces for the office based on the, I think it's nine dash nine dash six. Is that correct? Okay. Okay, so the assumption with this, with this formula is that, and, and those sixty-four business spaces or office spaces are not set aside for office. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So the assumption is that the student part, the students who are parking there will, will not be parking their car there during the workday. And there, and that's, that's the sum principle, right? That these are unbundled and there's, I mean, it's, I think it's criteria D in the nine dash two dash fourteen L. But that's an assumption that's being made about students will be leaving and taking their cars with them so that office workers who drive in will have parking. I just want to understand that, because that to me is what it sounds like the working assumption is. Is that?
No, I, I think what it's really about is that there's a limited area for parking. And so to the extent that parking can be provided by those who want it or use it, it's going to be available. But it's not saying that every office user will have access to a parking space. And if there's an open parking space, then they can park there. But I think to a certain extent, the idea of some principles is really to try and encourage folks to use alternative modes, rather than if you build it, they will come, kind of philosophy of we're going to just provide as much parking as we can on the site to accommodate everybody. So I think there's an inherent pressure to the sum principles and that's essentially what's, what the intent is. So the shared space is really about creating less area for a parking field or parking lot, devoted parking.
But yes, and I appreciate that explanation, but we do still have criteria for a, the request for a larger than fifty percent reduction, parking reduction. That fifty percent parking reduction can be approved by the city manager. But to go above fifty percent has to be approved by planning board. So the, I'm just trying to, I'm, I understand the sum principles, but I'm also kind of, I'm trying to understand the assumption that there'll be this natural ebb and flow of whose cars will, if people are using cars, whose cars will have space. And that's just, it's a concern of mine. So I just wanted to clarify what, sort of what the underlying, how, how the spaces, the assumption was the spaces would be used. So that's, that was my question.
Yeah, understood. And, and, you know, I think it'd be really helpful to have Chris McGrannahan, who's the applicant's traffic consultant, to help us with that, with how it's programmed and how it's intended to be used. But again, I think the point is there would be adequate accommodation through on or off-street parking. And if it can be shared, if there's opportunities available, the space is provided to be shared. And I think that's in essence how staff is looking at it. But I think it'd be helpful also to get the advice of the traffic consultant.
Okay, I appreciate that, Elaine. Thank you. Oh, and if I might say, this is the first time planning board has a female majority. So yay us.
So if I can just pursue that question on the parking, tandem parking matter, are there any safety issues that, that we need to be thinking about with respect to the tandem parking? That, you know, you only get access to the interior car if the exterior car in that tandem space is gone and there may be two different owners of cars and so on. Is that something to think about?
So I'm, I'm not certain about the safety aspect. And, you know, we can talk to Chris McGrannahan, the traffic consultant, again on that. But, you know, I think the intent is, there's more of a management issue, I think, when it comes to tandem spaces. And the applicant has also indicated that this is something that they have managed in the past with students and really intended to be as part of that four bedroom unit would be shared among them. So the tandem spaces can be maneuvered among each individual residential unit, so to speak. And we haven't had any indication that we're aware of, of tandem spaces presenting a safety issue. But again, maybe Chris McGrannahan can help with that.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Thank you, John. And this may also be for the applicant, but I just want to put a marker in it and maybe they can address it later. But, or Elaine, you may know. But with that safety issue that John just brought up, the thing that comes to my mind is the fires that we've had recently. And if the person who owns that car that's in front of the other car is not available to move it, that can pose an evacuation issue in, in my mind. And so my question was whether there's any provision for leaving a spare key or a valet key with the manager so that the car could be moved in the absence of its owner. So that's my question.
Yeah, and that is a really good point. And my understanding is that's the idea behind that shared parking between the different apartments, individual apartment users, is that they would have the spare keys available. But perhaps the applicant could talk about in, ensuring that there's a spare keys provided to the manager. That's a good point.
Yeah, Ms. Rolpus.
Thank you. So I have two questions. When I'll follow up on some parking. So my question is, how, historically, how many parking spaces did that office have access to or have? And what, what kind of a reduction are we looking at to what they have historically used or needed? Because people don't evolve, you know, as quickly as we'd like them to. So what is going to be the, the demand from the office based on their history?
Again, I'm going to defer to the applicant, because they've been working with the tenants of the office and may have a pretty good sense of how that's going to work for them. But the idea, as I understand it, is part of their lease agreement is to unbundle this from their office use. So, yeah, let's, let's bring it up with the applicant team.
Okay, so my second question is not about parking. And let me go back to, you refer to a Boulder Comp Plan policy that you're feeling that this is, is supporting. And I'm looking at the two-point-one-six. And that's talking about the city will encourage well-designed mixed-use and high-density developments that incorporate a substantial amount of affordable housing in appropriate locations. So talk to me a little bit about how does this support that policy?
Yeah, and, and so in my mind, it's sort of a two-part question or point. In other words, the, the intent is to have higher density or mixed-use development, particularly along transit corridors. And in this case, the applicant is intending to pay a cash and lieu fee of twenty-five percent of the residential units towards affordable housing. So because this has been designated for student housing, it doesn't change that configuration to a percentage greater per se. But there is a pretty robust requirement through the city of having twenty-five percent cash and lieu is what the intent is here, rather than onsite.
Yeah, I guess I was wondering about the appropriate location component of that policy. Because clearly, the, it, it isn't obvious that the in-lu money would go to something that would be easily accessible to this same population in an affordable. I mean, where do the, where do the students that can't afford market rate? Where do they, where do they go is what that policy kind of raises in my, in my mind.
Yeah, and in this case, students don't qualify for the Affordable Housing Program through the city. But it's also something that, at least our interpretation of that policy is, is this a good location for not just affordable housing, but for this particular use? And in this case, because it's directly across the street and walkable to the university and walkable to services and transit and so forth, it's considered an appropriate location for higher density. And so that's the other part of that policy that staff looks at in particular.
Yeah, it, well, it's tied to the affordable, substantial amount of affordable housing in appropriate locations. So it's, it's, it, I, I hear what you're saying. I just think it's important to remind ourselves that we tend to build housing for students who can afford the cost of market rate. And yet there are plenty of students who come from in-state that need housing as well. And maybe these are the people who end up taking up so much of the housing in the neighborhoods and sharing houses and that kind of a thing that we become concerned with overpopulation in those neighborhoods of students. But so I, I think it's a question that we need to keep reminding ourselves that we, we want to try to accommodate the populations where they need to be. And in this case, it's students, and students need affordable housing also.
Yeah. If I may, if I might provide a little bit more information, while the policy talks about affordable housing, that the city's affordable housing requirements are not administered through the discretionary review criteria that are in the code. They're imposed through the inclusionary housing standards that are a separate program. It's administered by staff outside of the discretionary review for legal reasons. And I know the three new boardman members that we have, we haven't really discussed that yet as part of the training. And maybe we can incorporate that in one of the upcoming meetings. But there are limitations and one of them is, exists under the Colorado Rent Control statute that doesn't allow us to require permanently affordable rental housing on a site. And, and that's one of the things that, why our affordable housing program is set up the way it is and that it doesn't require affordable housing on site.
Thank you for that. That's enlightening. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Mark?
So I, I, I looked at the packet with a lot of interest in the TDM plan that the applicant had provided. And on the packet page one thirty-five, and I also, I also learned, so the, the, the TDM plan relies on these Package A, Package B offerings. It looks like a toolkit. And if, if not read carefully, which I didn't the first time through, one would think that this is a city standard or code. And in fact, it's not. It's a draft. I, I got this from David Thompson. I asked some questions in general about the TDM toolkit, since this was my first exposure to it. So it's a draft that's never been adopted. So these two packages that the applicant refers to, Package A, Package B, as options, are, are not formally in our code. They are there as drafts. Um, the applicant selects Package A, which the emphasis is on RTD neighborhood eco passes being provided to all residents. And in fact, we actually have the applicant bond for three years' worth of neighborhood eco passes for all the residents. So be that as it may, what's interesting is, this is obviously a student. This is essentially a big private dorm. And I, I like the project. I like the layout, et cetera. But if it's all students, virtually all students and upwards, upwards of ninety-eight percent, pay a ninety-dollar per semester bus and bike fee that their buff pass is, it's not a neighborhood eco pass, but it's the equivalent of a neighborhood eco pass. And it's charged from RTD to CU the same way a neighborhood eco pass is and provides all the regional and local fares that a, an RTD neighborhood eco pass has. So consequently, my question to staff, to the applicant, is why is there such a thing as, as this proposal to buy eco- To buy Eco-Passes. Of whatever stripe. For the residents when the residents are students and they receive. Their CU Buff Pass.
So the Eco-Passes aren't intended for the students. The condition of approval is for the office users. So the I'm pulling up that slide I had, but it. The other aspects of the TDM include the secured long-term bike parking well in access of the required as well as. Short term similarly. There's a restroom with a shower for the office for folks who bike in. There's a bike and longboard share program and then. There's the dedicated parking for the Uber Lyft folks, the transportation network companies.
So, um, I I and oh, thank you. I was aware. That in fact, they provide business. Okay, no, you're right. I I'm sorry. I got that wrong. So. On page 138. Residents are expected to receive an Eco-Pass through their association with the university. Okay. Thank you. I I have misread that. So. In fact, the only the applicant is only providing the business Eco-Pass. To the office building tenants and not to the. Students at all.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, it's interesting though that they selected. Package A, though, in in the TDM plan, I guess where I got confused was. It says, well, we chose Package A. And even though they incorporate elements of Package B. They they choose Package A and I I can see now why that. The biggest portion of Package A is Eco-Passes and that's already handled by the university. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and you know, I will add that our transportation reviewers did take a pretty good look at it and felt it was a relatively robust TDM. So in terms of these other elements, it's. It's fairly robust.
We can, I I I'll, I have some comments on that when we get to deliberation. So thank you.
Okay, other questions? Laura?
Just a quick follow-on, and I may have this wrong, but did I also read that they will be providing Eco-Passes to staff? That help staff that that building for the students?
It would be for the office users. I I think that those who would staff it. You know, I think we could consider that, but the way it's written right now, it's Eco-Passes for the office users.
I must have misread that. Sorry. I I apologize for my misunderstanding.
Well, but Laura, if you want, when we get to actually voting. You can offer a recommendation. A motion to have add a recommendation that the TDM include. Eco-Passes for the people working in the residential building.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay, Ms. Robles.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have a a a question on the map of the that shows the. Designation of the streets with the bike routes and. And the on-street bike lane. So the map shows that there is an on-street bike lane that exists, but it ends at Aurora. And then that what happens after that is a designated. An existing designated bike route that kind of stops. Does it stop at the site? Or does it go beyond? And. Could that be an on-street bike lane? To match up with what's. To the north?
And so could you reference which page you're looking at, just so I make sure we're literally on the same page?
I'm on agenda item for a page eight.
Okay. So the multimodal improvements that are on 28th are. That's what is part of the North 20 or rather the 28th Street Network Plan. And so. Sorry, I've been I've been talking away here to my dog, so sorry about that. So so that plan that you're referencing is for the 28th Street Transportation Network Plan. And so it's. Indicating. Essentially those types of connections that a per a particular project would build out. Rather than us being able to determine what would be appropriate for that plan because that plan's already been adopted. So. What that really illustrates is the fact that over time, a number of those connections have been built with the various projects that you see. Labeled and also with a photograph. And so there is no plan to have. Bike lane in this context, rather there is a multi-use path. And following.
I see what you're saying. Okay, the green one is a multi-use path. And it's already built because it's not dashed. And the blue. Is a designated bike route that's on. The street, but it would become redundant, I would guess, because you've got a path right there.
Yeah, I I think that sometimes commuter bicyclists prefer having that. Ability to be on street. But yeah, in this particular case, they're actually building out chunks of the multi-use path that are missing. Because there's a couple of existing access. Ingress egresses into the parking for the motel. So that's go- those are going to be closed and they'll be creating those linkages. For the multi-use path.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Well, I I have a question on a on a different topic and that is. That I'd be very interested to learn how how this project has changed as a result of the. Very good and clear comments by the Design Advisory Board. And how how their comments have been taken into account. Both by staff and the applicant can talk about that too later on.
You bet. And I I do think it'd be helpful to have the applicant walk through it with exhibits. But they did some changes to the northwesternmost corner. That formerly just had an exit and that particular end. Was really transitioned to have a little bit more street presence with additional windows and have a functional. Doorway with a clearly defined. Entry feature over it. They also did some patterning changes on the north side of the building. To create a little more distinction in that very long elevation on the north side. They also included a cap on the top of the building to really emphasize and punctuate that. End of the building. There were some refinements done to the fenestration and windows on the south side of. That amenity space, that southwest corner. As well as some refinements to materials, simplifying materials. At one point, there were a number of different materials, including some stone. And the applicant refined that. That's just off the top of my head, but I think the applicant will have some exhibits and they can. Point that out in a little bit more detail.
Okay, I look forward to the applicant's thoughts on that as well. Laura?
I just wanted to follow up on my previous question. I found what I thought I read in the packet and I just want to get a little clarification on that. So this I'm looking at page 89 of 133. This this is in Attachment E, the applicant TDM plan. It's actions for Package A, Table 2. And in that middle bar where it's green says package elements. The last sentence says business Eco-Passes will be provided to full-time onsite property management. And office employees for a period of three years. So what does that full-time onsite property management? Refer to?
So in this particular case, they'll have a property manager onsite that'll help with things like, for example, that. Those issues where you might need a key for the car to to shift things around with the tandem spaces. I am just double checking to make sure that was incorporated into our conditions. Condition seven is. Let's see, Eco-Passes of employees of the office building and residential building for three years. So we did include that as part of a condition. So just as a correction there, it's not just the office. It also is for residential building employees.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So other other questions of staff? Okay, thank you. I should say that I was just reminded that it would be appropriate for everyone to declare any special interests or visits. In this project to ensure that there's a fair and objective consideration. So if anybody has any, any member of planning board has anything to declare in this matter, now's the time. Okay, Mark?
Just to be on the the safe side, and again, I don't know because of the nature of these conversations that Helen and I keep talking and I keep. Figuring out what is appropriate, what should be revealed, etc. I did talk with David Thompson's staff about the TDM plan. And so I did that without specific site discussion, but we did talk about. TDM planning in the package and that's why I got my education about the draft nature of packages and toolkits, etc. I also talked with a representative of CU about their relationship with RTD. Bus passes, etc. Again, not in relation to this site. At all specifically, just about them and RTD. In a general sense and understanding their past program, etc., because of my partialness reading of. The TDM plan. So I wanted to understand that. So I did make a contact there.
Thank you. Helen, do you have any comments?
No, I think Mark covered it.
Okay, I can say that I've been many times to the site to look at it with my plans in hand. But I have not had any contact with the owners and I feel I can be fair and objective in this matter. Okay. Well, thank you. We have now been going for about an hour and a half. And I think perhaps before we move ahead with the applicant's presentation, we could take a five-minute break and. We'll meet again in at seven at. Let's see, 7:35.
Cindy, if you're there, I can get set up.
I'm here. Yes, let me unshare my screen here.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I feel ashamed for not only having not changed, not having a Zoom background, but. Like Cindy changed her background. How about that?
She's exceptionally talented.
David used to, and sometimes I would remember to do it, but David used to switch up his background based on the item that we were. I think I did it at one point for a Humane Society thing, so there were like dogs in the background.
I don't know. That sounds like something in an Apple. I don't know, that sounds like something in an applicant.
Laura has has the the we have turned from day to night. Laura has switched.
Well, and now and I, we're just adjusting our like lamps to try to keep our face from. I saw you do, and and I, five minutes before the meeting started, I I ran and got a clip lamp to try to keep my face out of the shadow.
It caved early in the pandemic and bought a really cheap ring light off Amazon.
Ring lights.
Ever see that? That's what's going on. If you're wondering why I have decent light, it's because I have a light first pointed directly at my face.
I'll even have a timer now when people speak behind me, so.
Okay, I think uh, we'll call the meeting back to order and move ahead with the applicant's presentation.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, board members. This is Adrian Sofa Sofa Spawn Architects, speaking for the applicant. Uh, Core Spaces and um, our team of uh, JBA Sharon Picopio, Studio Terra Carol. Adams, our landscape architect and LSC Traffic Consultants, Transportation Consultants. I'll be making the presentation and we'll all be available to address your questions as we move forward. Uh, just want to touch briefly on, I know that. Uh, staff did a great job of presenting the context, but one or two or two, a couple more things on that regard. This is looking. Eastward from the campus across Twenty-Eighth Street, and you can see the amount of change that has occurred here. Uh, Elaine referred to landmark loss on the far left, landmark loss to the province. And additionally, a number of new afford, pardon me, student housing projects along the Twenty-Eighth Street, Frontage Road. All having occurred since um, the early two thousands, this whole zone of of. Larger scale, high density residences are in keeping with the the additional residences that you see behind, which are also high density. Though these have typically been built in support of specifically student housing in a manner that is not possible. Probably anywhere else in the city where we are this close to the campus. And student housing is completely appropriate here, also at a high density level where this is actually the widest public right of way, I believe. In the city with maybe the exception of Foothills Parkway. This is the last in the series along the frontage road that where that's possible. You can see that um. It is adjacent to the U Club, which is at five stories significantly taller than this site as we drop down and. But it is, it is equally supported by a transportation network that allows for bike paths with direct access to the campus, which is why student housing is most appropriate here. A few other attributes of this site. Which Elaine touched on, as you turn into and come into Boulder, it is a major gateway view into the into the community. And um, as such, it also allows for tremendous views from the site to the flat irons beyond, but this is something that you really get at the rooftop. And not on the ground level, uh, because that. Opportunity comes from the fact that the grade drops and then there's this twenty-eight foot high retaining wall that supports US thirty-six. As it makes the turn into Boulder. Likewise, the grade drops along the street, along the frontage road itself, and there's a ten-foot drop in grade. Uh, from the club, U Club corner at the at the northwest corner of of our property as it drops a block to the southwest corner. In addition, there's another drop in grade within the site. I I think Elaine mentioned it in relation to the solar access issue where the the um. The site drops five feet from west to east at the boundary between the existing office building property and the best western property. This is significant because um, well, we'll come back to it in a minute, but the one other thing I want to note is, if I can get rid of this, but uh, let's see, maybe not. The site currently has a tremendous amount of parking areas and and asphalt. That supports its use as a essentially a motel that caters to auto. Auto-driving residents of the motel itself, the of the of the um, temporary stay lodgings. As such, there are a number of curb cuts, one, two, three, access into the motel as well as four and five today supporting the office use, which um. Really does impact the ability of bicycles. Coming down the frontage road. The um. As a student housing project, it is. It is typical that residents are expected to use their bikes to get between here and campus and around campus. So we are orienting. The 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 life of this place as much as possible in support of that and. In that regard, the first thing we have to do is to to make a place that actually supports. Um, wheeled vehicles as well as pedestrians. And as we mentioned earlier, there is a ten-foot drop along Twenty-Eighth Street. And commensurably, that five-foot drop in grade on the east side starts to define a developable parcel of land. The reason why that's significant is that. In the way that height is measured in the City of Boulder Land Use Code. The 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 thirty-five foot allowance for height is taken from the lowest point on the site. That is twenty-five feet away from any building. Face. So the the low point of the site can create an obstacle in terms of. Uh, or it creates a datum from which you measure height on the building overall. That datum is taken at the lowest point. Of the site relative to the building. So we tried to stay away from that eastern bench. By twenty-five feet in order to not be impacted by that steep slope along the bench. And then that is the place at which we provided access into the garage because it is at the lowest point of the site that it makes the most sense to come into the garage. Because we have the least grade to traverse with that on-ramp, which you can see here in the right lower right-hand corner of this section. The site, this section is taken through that ramp and you can see on the on the left side. The uh, the site slopes up, but it's at the low point of that ten-foot zone, so it doesn't seem like much here, but it becomes much higher on the on the northern side of that. Also then, going from there, making a level place is important in terms of entering the building at grade. So we identified the point at which it makes the most sense to come into the building with your bike. Once you've gotten down off that drop of ten feet, and that's where we place the building entrance. Uh, because that that entry zone is intended to be a place where you can bring your bikes into the building courtyards, and we'll come back to that a little bit later. But the section through here shows you that that level grade comes in on the right side. Uh, at the south end of the building and then it stays level through the courtyard and slopes up to the U Club, which, going back a moment. You can see is at a higher grade by about ten feet. This is the 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 property corner is actually right about here. And that's about ten feet higher than the um. It's not a full ten feet, excuse me, it's ten feet higher at the at the northwest corner, but at this point it's sloped down. Somewhat from west to east, but U Club at fifty-five feet is significantly higher north of our building, which. When this was designed was what the moratorium was still in effect and we kept everything to thirty-five feet rather than address it in the future. Talked earlier about the autocentric nature of the site and in order to 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 take this footprint. Of of building and make it usable for residences, we had to create opportunities for light and air uh, in the in in courtyard spaces that. Uh, serve the residential units. A word on open space. This is an open space determine density on this property. Every unit has to have uh, twelve hundred and square foot open space allotment to support. One unit. And the office building also requires twenty percent of the open space on the land be dedicated. To uh, twenty percent of the land area be dedicated to open space. So how we handle open space on this property was a major consideration. Carol Adams is available to talk about this and answer any of your questions that you may have, but it was a major design uh, component of what we did. Going from there in terms of developing our massing, we we recognizing that we had these great views to the southwest, we wanted to turn our amenities, which are at at. The the ground and third floor levels towards that and also create a a a gesture towards that entry um, uh, into Boulder. So. In that regard, our third floor amenities are facing towards that mountain view, and this is a glimpse of it from the um, overpass that. In that area. The multimodal mode corridors, we're extending the uh, the multi-use path to uh, the the limits of where we're required to per the connections plan. But it also allows for bikes to come in on that sidewalk zone as well as maintaining the at-street-level path. And then from there, linking through to Twenty-Eighth Street again with the sidewalk connection and new parking, which today there is not neither of those exist on the Twenty-Eighth Street. Frontage Road as it turns eastward. We were also providing a new internal um, series of paths, social paths. That are open and accessible to the public. And we've located the entry, as I've noted before, where we come down to a level spot. At that point, we've we've created a of a sort of inflection in that um. That amenity zone that we referred to earlier, and that's where the entry is broken and allows for access into the courtyards, which is where the access control point is for the residents. So when you come in with your bike, it's anticipated that you would come through the control. Uh, your key card access allows you through the gates, excuse me, a little bit off here. And then there's a direct connection to an exterior stair that takes you down to the garage that which has a parallel ramp, so you can roll your bike down that ramp. And into the garage where we have a substantial amount of bike parking, well in excess of what's required. By the land use code, as well as services to support uh, maintenance and and you can see here. Also, we have parking uh, adjacent to the office users for bikes, showers. Et cetera. We showed you some of this uh, at the concept plan and and it has developed somewhat since then. And we showed you it's a concept plan, how we turned that amenity space facing the um, the mountains. Underneath it, on the ground floor, we have a corner wrapping student active amenity space. I believe that was the terminology we all agreed on. And uh, at concept review, this is the the image of that zone. When we went to dab, this is where we were and coming out of that, we continued to develop it. And have taken that that screening element and turned it into the the uh, the residential residential entry portal. And simplified the fenestration along that amenity zone. You can see the outdoor seating here uh, in the shade created by the pool of the above and the pool deck. Likewise, this is from the concept plan review and uh. When we went to dab and you can see it as it is today, again, the the amenity zone is wrapping the corner facing both towards the south. And the west and shade is provided by the overhanging pool deck and then it drops down and creates the new entry portal for the residents. And just a couple of other views of the current. Uh, status of the project. These are some of the images that we 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 thought highlighted. The uh, the intent, you can see on the lower left here with a feeling that we're trying to get in the in the in that amenity space, but it would open out in both. The south side as well as to the west, to the outdoors. The um, the connection through to the the entry into the courtyard, which is, by the way, all the stairs and elevators are accessed from the exterior. Uh, the courtyard, which again, I think Carol can go into some detail if we if we have a little time here. Um, and then just some backup images that show you, I think there was reference made to some of the things that we did with DAB's input. Um, and I have as backup also elevations and the uh, design excellence sheet. I want to give Carol a little time to speak if you if you want to jump in here, Carol, we have another a minute and a half. If you would like to do so, this would be great to do now.
Okay, thank you, Adrian. Um, so just a little bit more on the landscape and the open space. I think kind of the three key points are that there's a variety of spaces throughout the property. Um, passive and active. There's year-round landscape interest. Um, the the open space totals about over two and a half acres, which is. Larger than the size of a typical city of Boulder Pocket Park, so it's a pretty substantial amount of outdoor space to use. The second point is that there's um, these new connections and pathways throughout, especially the eastern um, third of the site. As well as the connections we talked about on the perimeter, that makes it very permeable, very open to the public. And and all of this landscape is open to the public with the exception of the courtyards, which are interior to the building. Um, and in interior to the courtyard, you can see some of the imagery, some of the things we're trying to accomplish there for, you know, geared to the students. Um, and on the eastern side where it's open to the office users and the public. We're looking at a variety of outdoor spaces shaded, um, sunny. Outdoor court space, outdoor office space that's suitable. If somebody wanted to take a meeting outside, I think we've all learned through COVID that. There's a desire when it's nice outside, you'd you'd rather be outside um, doing whatever it is you do, and then some court sports, so there's passive and active recreation. Um, plenty of bike parking. Adrian talked about the bike parking that's secured, but there's plenty. Of bike parking on site that's considered the short-term bike parking. Um, a substantial amount at the entry of the student housing for for guests of the students and then quite a bit over at the office area too for. People either in the office or coming to use um, the recreational activities and seating areas over there, so. I think that's all I need to say at this time. Happy to answer questions later.
So um. That's the the end of what we thought we'd start with our presentation, and if you have questions, we're of course happy to address them.
Well, thank you. Um, is any uh, any member of planning board have inquiries of the applicant? Sarah?
Uh, thank you very much and thanks for the presentation. Um, I just wonder if we could go back to, maybe you could give us some insight into the conversations. Been having with the folks in the office building about, I realize that parking should not be the only thing we talk about, but I I would just love to hear what um. Those conversations have been in terms of what they believe their needs to be. He was, the code requires.
Rob, do you want to take this?
Yeah, um, yeah, appreciate the the question. So I I'm Rob Bach, uh, with Core Spaces, we're the applicant developer and and owner of both the properties. Um, yeah, so so we we acquired the 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 office building approximately about a year ago, um, and and even when we got into conversations. On the acquisition of that, it was always with the intent of of a project that we're proposing here today. So we've been having conversations with um, existing tenants as well as as new tenants that we have signed in into the building. Um, but but there are existing leases in place that that do have have parking requirements. And I think one of the questions that came up was how many spaces are on-site there today? So there's there are fifty-three existing spaces in the service parking lot. Uh, and obviously through the proposal, we'll be eliminating that surface parking lot and essentially transferring those spaces down into the subterranean level of of the new building. Um, so, you know, going from exterior service space to to cover secure um, secured spaces. So. Um, I think people have been really excited about that, especially, you know, in inclement weather opportunity that 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 can happen in in Boulder. Um, so, you know, generally it has been has been a good conversation and um. You know, as as we talked about earlier with the TDM plan, and we will be providing uh, the the BECO spaces for uh, the the employees of the office building. Um, so that we're we're hoping that through those measures, through the the additional um, secured and short-term bike parking, the shower facilities. Um, and we're we're hoping that the demand uh, in the future for for office parking ultimately decreases, right? Um, and and creates more opportunities for for multi-mortal opportunities. So um, yeah, we we see that demand kind of, you know, decreasing in the future, but um, you know. And as we sit today with existing lease obligations, you know, we'll we'll have to, you know.
But you're not so, I may add, thank you, Rod, can I just follow up?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
A question and a half. So do the tenants in in the office building have clients who come to visit them? Or is it like, is there is there adequate, do you believe there's adequate space for those clients who may not take public transportation or ride their bike over?
Uh, yeah, so there, I mean, so some spaces that that we already have allocated, some of them are essentially reserved guest facing for um, you know, for visitors to those. So there's a dentist office, there's a physical therapy office. Uh, but there are, you know, kind of more formal offices where it's actually employees versus guest parking. So there it's it's a mix of things and, you know, as the building gets re-tenanted, it'll always be a um, you know, kind of a changing condition. But, you know, a- as it's today, uh, plenty of adequately parked, um, you know, per code. And then we're we're really only proposing a slight reduction to what is code required uh for for the actual office space.
Well, you're you're asking for you, you've you've you're asking for a very large reduction from what is required by code, but because the city is very focused on trying to decrease single-family, I'm sorry, single occupancy vehicle use. Um, you've requested a fifty-five percent reduction and I I I, you know, I understand the the tandem giving you changing that percentage, but it doesn't, but it's um, I I just have some concerns. Uh, I have some concerns about the parking.
Um, yeah.
But so you feel that there's enough parking for the guests and enough parking that will be switched out available to the folks who work in that building, which is basically.
Yeah, a- a- absolutely. Um, yeah, we we would not be putting forth a proposal that that we didn't feel uh comfortable with. Uh, we've done a ton of market research. Um, yeah, I I think the the other pieces too, right? Is that, you know, it it is a shared parking structure, right, between two separate uses? That that other use is student residential, which is in, you know, one of the most optimal locations, you know, to to justify a parking reduction like this, right? From from what is code required, these are four-bedroom units that are code required for three spaces. But in in a student housing, um, especially a four-bedroom unit, you're you're doing, you're renting a unit with, you know, typically three of your friends, right? And it's a great opportunity to be able to share cars amongst your friends. So it's like naturally, um, you know, a a natural reduction just just from that. Um, and and the tandem spaces are are perfect solution to with four-bedroom uh type units. So um, you know, most of those all will be, our our goal would be to lease um a tandem space, which serves two vehicles uh to roommates, right? And so you can share keys um, you know, very easily within your unit. Um, we we're also looking into the possibility of having lock boxes, um, you actually down in um, you know, right off the elevator core there. So if you're, you know, if you're leaving, you wanna, you know, you don't want to go all the way back up to your unit to, you know, put your key back in there in case your roommate needs to move the car later, you can leave it right in a lockbox right near your car uh in the garage. So it's a lot of just sort of management things that that we can do. We we have, you know, a number of tandem spaces across our full portfolio across the nation. Um, you never had any safety issues. I know that came up uh previously. Um, really no safety issues. Um, you know, you you can have problems here or there, but we've got full-time uh during normal business hours, full-time staff in our properties. We've got five different full-time employees between a property manager, a leasing manager, uh, maintenance staff that that can answer these questions. Then we've got twenty-four-hour um kind of emergency offline, uh, i- if something did arise. So, you know, someone from Core's management team is always going to be available if if issues to arise. So I hit on a number of kind of other topics there that.
I'm sorry, let me just follow up one last question. So part of our code, um, part of the code for the um these sort of the fifty-five percent reduction that you're asking points out the need for adequate on-street parking. And it just isn't clear to me from either staff presentations or applicant presentation, what the on-street parking opportunities are.
Um, so the on-on-street, um, we we actually are providing, I don't know if it's fifteen or sixteen exactly, but um all the locations shown in red on on the screen there are are brand-new on-street parking opportunities that are that do not exist today. So, you know, th- those won't be reserved for um, you know, for for anyone in our at our properties for the public. But um, you know, it it is an opportunities if if there's an open space there that someone visiting either our building or, you know, either of our buildings, um, you can continue to live. So those are for sixteen brand-new spaces, which, you know, and I guess we're focusing on the fifty-five percent, but that is sort of the the code one, but, you know, the the effective um parking ratio that that we're talking about here, um, you know, really only comes all the way down to thirty-two percent. So as as we kind of walk through all those items, yeah.
I appreciate that, but we have to, we have to abide, we have to focus on on code. So that's why I'm asking. So thanks very much. I appreciate that.
So Chris McGrannahan, our our transportation consultant, also wanted to add something here, I believe.
Yeah, I I assume everyone can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Great. All right. So I I am Chris McGrannahan. I was referring, I think Elaine referenced me a few times because I helped with this, we're looking at on the screen together. Um, I just wanted to offer up, I can go through this graphic uh in lots of detail and explain what all the different parking components are. I can also talk about the various TDM measures and how they tie into this. If I'd I'd love to do that, but I know that every time's important. Would I have time to do that? Is there interest in that?
I I I'd love to hear it. I I think it'd be helpful to understand your perspective.
All right. So we're looking at this, the. Yeah. Awesome. That's great. So what, so first I'll start with the uh color-coded map on the right. Uh, if you look down the far right, there's the legend. Uh, and so the the purpley color is the fifty-three spaces that we're going to be assigned to the existing leases in the office building. So obviously, they're located.
Okay, uh, hey, can you uh tell us which page you're looking at?
I'm looking at the screen. I mean, I'm assuming it's being shared. I'm seeing it. Is everyone seeing this, this, the?
Yeah, I I think what John is asking, if we have the information, is if it's also in the packet, which um I I don't have the.
These graphics are the last couple pages of the TDM plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, so so John, I I believe it's um of the overall planning board packet, it's page one forty-five of one eighty-two.
And Chris, it is appearing, I I think, um, I I know for me it's a little small. And so I think for some of us, it's even smaller. So um, that I think that was why the question. Continue, please.
Sure, thank you. So the so the purpley spaces to the right uh are the spaces that will be allocated to the existing leases in the office building. And as Rob said, as those tenants come and go, those leases may be adjusted so that, you know, there's maybe not as many spaces in the garage or they're not dedicated. Uh, the next thing in the legend is the standard and compact residential parking in the garage. There's a hundred and five spaces, and so they're kind of the aqua color in the garage, the most predominant color in the garage. Uh, and then we have the fifty-ten spaces and you can see how those are kind of, you know, behind the standard spaces. And as Rob said, the intent is to lease the tandem space to the uh the normal space that blocks it. Um, and then there's sixteen on-street spaces in red, which are available to the general public, not just us. Uh, and then there's the two TNC spaces on the office building side of the of the lot. And so uh the idea here, of course, is that as the office leases renew, uh, you know, there's opportunities for sharing. Uh, as I think was mentioned earlier in the call, that the office building tends to have peak parking during the day, during the week. And the residential tends to be in the evening when everyone's home from their daily uh trips. Uh, and so now what I do want to do is I want to look at the the table on the left side of this graphic. So uh on the the left column says proposed spaces three fifty, and then we have the a hundred and the next column over says proposed onsite code compliant spaces. That's where we have a hundred and fifty-eight spaces and we have the large parking reduction, the formal fifty-five percent parking reduction. And as you go to the right in this column, we talked about all the opportunities that don't count towards the code requirement, but are opportunities to park. So as you go to the right, we have the two TNC spaces, the fifty-ten spaces, eleven onsite moped spaces, and then the the sixteen on-street spaces. So when you add all those together, if we were allowed to count all those, our parking reduction would be thirty-two percent and more in which is fairly similar to some other parking reductions I've seen uh over the years. Um, we also show in this table that we're providing over a hu- a hundred and fifty-seven percent of the required short-term bicycle parking and a hundred and eighty-three percent of the required long-term bicycle parking. So we're greatly exceeding the bicycle parking, which is a great lead into the the TDM measures. And uh the first thing I wanted to say about the TDM is there was a comment about why did we pick, you know, option A, package A over package B? And the reason is is that, you know, for the last fifteen or twenty TDM plans I've done on Boulder, we always pick A if it's transit-rich area because we want to have bus passes for the office employees. If we picked B, the office employees wouldn't get a bus pass, they might just get a bus ticket or a fund that they could use. So we didn't use A because our students get their passes from the university. We use it because it's a transit-rich area. So we're just being consistent with prior TDM plans that we've done. Uh, then the other things in the TDM plan, uh, we talked about the moped spaces, there's eleven of those. We have a bike share and a longboard share program. We have an opportunity for e-bike charging. We already mentioned that we greatly exceed the bike parking requirements. And we have a seventy-five dollar alternative transportation fund for students per year that do not have a vehicle. So if someone has a vehicle leased for our property, they do not get seventy-five dollar alternative transportation fund. It's only for those folks that don't bring a car. Uh, and so I feel when we we pull up at all these things together, all of the various TDM measures, some of which are over and above typical. And then the the shared parking opportunities that we have, we feel that we've got a pretty good plan here. Uh, it it looks like a big parking reduction, but we, like, I think we said before, this is, you know, leased by the bedroom. So we're, you know, the thought is is that, you know, we saw the graphic during the night that seventy percent, seventy-two percent of CU students don't use a vehicle to get to class. And I think that was just CU students in general and not ones that live in town, walkable to campus. So we feel like this is a strong plan, but I I'm certainly here along with the rest of the team to answer any more questions or to answer anything specifically on this.
There's one other point I'd like to add, Chris, which is that a question was raised by Board Member Boone about what we had before we had the tandem spaces. At concept plan, we showed a hundred and sixty-two parking spaces, which amounted to a forty-nine percent reduction. Uh, at that time, staff came back and uh since that time, staff came back and said, well, we think we need to come up with more. And so we offered these as a way to mitigate the um the desire for a greater reduction of 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 uh our parking reduction. So the tandem space that was offered up as a way to provide more parking in a manner that was supportable here, where our function for parking is really car storage in a student housing context.
Yeah, and just to add on that, the the car storage, I mean, like, across our portfolio, we've done some basic studies that, you know, sometimes cars on average do not leave our properties one time a week. Um, so it that that it just further exemplifies that a lot of times, these these um these garages that we build are ultimately car storage. Um, so uh it it's a strong indicator that, you know, people that do choose to bring their cars, you know, to our buildings and at least these, they will be unbundled from from their units. Um, they're they're not using them on a daily basis like a typical multifamily building. Um, that really their their car's there if they need it, but they're they're walking and biking um, you know, to campus and and anywhere else they might need to go. The TNC spaces, you know, the being able to take an Uber and and lift around town safely, it's gonna be amazing. Uh, and you've got Sprout, you know, that most people use their cars to go get groceries. But uh you've got Sprout Market, just a short, you know, few-minute walk, uh, you know, down the street. So um, you know, really kind of a perfect location with all the other multi-transit opportunities and the bus, um, you know, bus network. All the great investments that Boulder has put into uh into their transit network. Um, you know, this 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 project will really be able to, uh, in our our future community, we'll be able to really be able to benefit from, so.
Questions on that issue?
Yeah, John, can I ask a question? I I wanted to ask Adrian, since you pointed out my question. Thank you for, thank you for answering that. That was, that was helpful. Um, and and understanding the lease obligations and the fact that this is not a mix of uses, but they've got an obligation for the fifty-three these spaces currently. I understand that over time, that will um, that will diminish. Um, that one hundred and sixty-two that you had mentioned, Adrian, that that's ju- just just to give me a contrast, what's what's the total number now? Um, and does that include the fifty-three or is that separate from that?
No, the total number of spaces that actually count towards the requirements of the land use code are a hundred and fifty-eight. So it reduced from a hundred and sixty-two to a hundred and fifty-eight by that apples-and-apples comparison. And the fifty tandems, or however many tandems we have, I forget, is it fifty? Yes.
Yep.
That's in addition to that number.
Got got it. And that one fifty-eight subsumes that fifty-three for the office.
Right, right. And the reason that happens is because we've gotten rid of drive aisles.
Yep, yep, I understand that. Okay, great. Um, that that's uh, that's helpful. I I have a question for staff, and I don't know that we have an answer. Well, I I think I know the answer, but um, the question is um, I don't really, I I understand the car storage concept. I don't know why we're promoting it in Boulder. And I I want to know, as it relates to our affordability goals, what the trade-off is by having car storage as an as a component of this project? What does the city's benefit from that?
Uh, I think there were a lot of questions tied into that one question. Um, but let me see if I can um interpret. So we're not promoting tandem spaces in the city. They're actually an anomaly, um, and not something that we would consider a standard space in the code. But in this particular case, with this particular type of residential use, where it's known that storage can be a factor for students for the weekend who want to just use a car on the weekend, they mostly don't use it. So it actually seems like a reasonable approach to adequate accommodation. In other words, we don't need a parking place for every student. And if they can share the spaces and if the tandem space serves as just a, you know, a place to store the the car, then it meets the criteria. So I I would caution to say that we're not promoting uh tandem spaces. It's just what is in front of us right now.
Well, it uh the applicant mentioned that it was staff's direction. So I, I mean, I.
I'll I'll pull back from that and just say, staff's direction was, we felt like there needed to be better adequate accommodation.
Yes, that didn't.
That was the solution.
Yeah, we came up with it as an option to provide a reasonable method for storing resident cars that are not being used on a daily basis, and staff found that not a bad idea.
Okay. Thanks. That that's that's helpful clarification. Yes. Um. I'll say I have I have I have questions outside of parking, so I'll save those.
Okay, other other folks have any questions, Mark?
Yes, um, I I have a bunch that I'll deal with the 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 screen that's uh being shown right now. Um, first one, kind of a mundane one, how do how do you define a moped? In today's world of e-bikes, conventional bikes, um, two-stroke, gas-powered scooters versus stand-up scooters? I'm I'm just curious about the your definition of a moped and and the eleven spaces for a moped.
Chris, you want to take that?
Certainly I can. Um, I'm not sure that it has to be a moped. It's a parking space that, you know, you can fit a moped in. I guess a small motorcycle could fit in there, yeah. Uh, an e-bike could fit in there. I maybe Rob can answer as what their intent is, but the space is big enough to hold anything that's the size of a moped.
Yeah, I I I I don't personally have one, so I can't uh speak the the right language to it. But yeah, it'd be a a vessel essentially, right? Uh, I don't I don't know the C Cs of one of what one of those are, but uh, the type that needs to be on the street and not on the the multi-use path, as I was looking at the the code this morning.
Okay, thank you. Um, so uh in regard to the bike storage, bikes are undergoing a pretty radical change right now. And and many users are switching from a uh uh an un-motorized to a to to an e-bike. And um without any detail of the bike storage plan, does does your bike storage facility accommodate the kind of extra length, extra weight? Um, uh, in fact, extra length, extra weight and the charging requirements uh if if a majority or even more uh of the bikes were e-bikes?
Yeah, I I did, Mark, I think I think that's a a great point and and something that that we've been, you know, starting to study. Uh, but, you know, to date on our properties, as we sit right now, there it really hasn't been much demand to date yet uh at at our operating properties. Um, yeah, I, you know, knowing Boulder very well, uh, I I I could definitely imagine that that demand will will increase. Um yeah, I, you know, knowing Boulder very well, uh I I I could definitely imagine that that demand will will increase uh in the in the future. Um and and so it's something that that we, you know, we'll we'll commit to study and and understand and kind of the true demand projections in the future. Um and and look to see how we can, we can accommodate that, um you know, as we get further along. Um if, you know, Chris mentioned that that we do um have a kind of private bike share program. Um so we we use uh Von Moos bikes out of uh out of Europe, actually. So they're they're electric, electric bikes, pretty amazing. But yes, we've we've already had experience with e-bikes and kind of the infrastructure that goes into them. Um you know, storage opportunities for those. So, you know, we'll be continuing to study that and, you know, be able to build capacity in the future as uh demand increases. Um but we are talking about students here, so, you know, not every student can can afford a, you know, five to seventy-five hundred dollar e-bike as, you know, but as costs do come down, I see demand kind of increasing for the student market. So that is something that we'll study and and try to understand how we can build capabilities to expand uh our offering uh in the future.
Okay, um we can talk about that a little a little bit. Uh same thing with uh car charging. Um what sort of accommodation plans, infrastructure, do you have for uh car charging?
Yeah, so um and I believe it's part of the uh, you know, the the new Boulder Energy Code requirement. If if it's not part of that, it's part of just the the standard Boulder code, uh does require our ten percent of spaces as as EV uh spaces. So, you know, we will be providing the code required. Um and but the the other thing I would say about it is um. You know, a- as we've been studying it more and more, you know, compared to a typical multifamily building to student housing, being from vehicles. Um, you know, if someone doesn't have a vehicle, a lot of times it's a passed-on car from um from parent potentially, right? And so it's it's an older vehicle. Um, you know, people aren't buying seventy-five thousand dollar Teslas as as students, right? Um and some are, but not not very many. So it's the the demand right now uh in student housing space for EV is is lower than what you might see elsewhere. But even ten percent will probably, and we won't necessarily be able to have the demand to, you know, have ten percent of our space to actually utilize as EV. But we will be ready for that a- as it does, uh you know, continue to evolve and uh the direction I think we all, we all think uh the market is going.
Okay, and then um you mentioned your partner with shared uh e-bikes. Um. What about the uh partnering? Has there been discussion with um Boulder B-cycle? About uh exterior uh public stations for? Um I I know you have a short-term bike parking uh at the, on the south side, the south, the east side there. Uh do you have plans or accommodation for whether it's Boulder B-cycle or other uh public docked uh bike station?
Um yeah, so a- a- as we sit right now today, we we don't. Um we 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 very, if if that, you know, our property fits into their network. Um and and it's a future opportunity. It's definitely something that we'd be interested in uh in looking into.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Oh, George, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Um I had a question outside of parking. Um fir- first of all, I appreciate all the green space that that you guys programmed into this. It looks um, you know, really, really, really interesting, and the reduction of surface parking is awesome. Um, you know, we had a, we had another project come in front of us uh recently. Um where courtyard sizing was an issue, and these look um pretty substantial. Um so I just wanted to, uh i- if you could just uh give me the rough dimensions of these courtyards and what the programming is inside them. Uh it's more for my education than than a specific. Uh I I just want to understand what what your vision of them uh is and what their dimensions are.
Yeah, so I'll I'll. Um to to Adrian, but yeah, we'd love Carol to jump in here. But yeah, just to hit on that, George, George, this is one of the things we're most excited about for, uh you know, this property as as open space is really the driver of of this project and this this opportunity. These are going to be amazing spaces. This is going to be the differentiator for for this project within the community, I think, for for many, many years. So we're super excited about it. But we'd love for for Carol to share, uh you know, her vision for for the courtyards and and everything that she's a visitor.
Yeah, right now we're about sixty-five feet wide, which if you're familiar with courtyards around town, are, that is really wide. And um eighty feet long. Carol?
Yeah, um so there's two different courtyards connected by a a walkway. Um and and currently on the left, we're showing um a variety of uses, including a large lawn area um in the center, um an outdoor kitchen with outdoor seating um for barbecuing and things like that. A climbing wall. You can see some of these images as I'm talking. I can't point to them, but um large communal seating for groups, um outdoor ping pong or other games like that. Um plant, raised planters to kind of provide some separation. Everywhere you see one of those long skinny green boxes is is basically screening, oops.
Sorry.
Um screening um a bedroom. So there's some buffer between bedroom windows and these outdoor use areas. Um one of the things we're really, you know, I I'm a landscape architect, so I really like trees. And so we're um, we've got some innovative ways to provide tree canopy in here, even though we're over a parking structure. That center green area is actually going to slope from flat up to the sides, so that the trees are, look like they're actually planted at grade. Um which I think is going to be a very cool feature in there with a walkway connection through the middle of it. Then on the other courtyard, we're thinking about um on the right-hand side there kind of a large central deck area that stepped. You can see some of the images above with this tiered seating approach. So that once you're up on top, there's a, there's like a shaded canopy of seating where the trees actually look like they're planted at grade, but you're you're up above grade, and so the trees sit on top of the parking structure. Um so you're going to feel like you're in a very shady canopy place. Um there's all kinds of cool seating. There's um hammocks on the north end. There's um fire tables with, you know, seating around them. Um places where you can be in a group, places where you can be by yourself. Um places you can be in the sun if you want to be, and places you can be in the shade. These these courtyards will get a fair amount of sun, even though they're surrounded by buildings. So and that sun will move throughout the day if you can picture, you know, there's the shadow moving. Um and so there's just going to be, I think, you know, pretty much a year-round use of these courtyards, maybe not on the coldest, stowiest day, but people will want to be outside, and these will be very convenient um to get to. The other thing I should mention is that any of the units that face these, that come out to these courtyards, they won't have direct access, but they'll they have a private patio. Every single unit in this complex will have either a balcony if they're on the upper floor or a patio at grade. And so that's that kind of lighter orangey color that you see.
Okay. Uh colleagues on planning board, any further questions? Sarah?
Sorry about that. Um I just want to ta- ask Chris. If we could go back, I I'm just, there's, I think there's some clarification that would be helpful to me. Um the, it's a little unclear whether you talk about the designated, the purple that's designated for the office. Is it in fact designated for the office or is it, is this, the sump principles are applied? And so folks could end up parking anywhere. That's my, that's a just a clarification question.
Sure. So the way it exists right now is the fifty-three office spaces are are leased spaces. So on opening day, those fifty-three spaces will be for the office. And then the intent is, is that as those leases turn over, they become fully shared spaces.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Does anyone, is anyone correcting Chris, or is that, that is, that is accurate? That's accurate, I guess.
But yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, it it's essentially accurate. I mean, it's slightly less, slightly less than that, but I put approximately. Uh yeah, I think we're at a forty-five spaces that are um, you know, currently leased. Um so then a- all other spaces that that are available in the garage will be leased individually to residential tenants. Um so every space will have, yeah, a separate unbundled lease as, um yeah, for the the some principles, yeah.
Okay. So I think what I'm a little concerned about, and I just would love your response to it. Maybe you can allay my concerns, is that we keep talking about we said, we we keep talking about how this is going to be the student, the, there'll be a flow of cars. And the folks using the parking in during the day will not be the folks using the parking at night. And at the same time, we talk about how this is going to be car storage for the students, which means the cars are not actually if it is in fact car storage for the students, those cars are not going to be moving. And I'm just a little concerned about um whether we're making assumptions that the sump principles will apply here in an effective way. And I'm happy, I would just love to hear your thoughts about that.
I think there might be some misunderstanding. I don't believe we're saying that the purple goes to student use at night, are we, Chris?
No, and I, for now, the purple is not student use at night, but over time it could be if those spaces become unbundled with updated leases. Uh but I think one thing that's worth mentioning here is, we all, that we also did a traffic study. The traffic study wasn't that big of a deal because there isn't that much traffic from a student housing development. So if you look at the in and the outs of our project, you know, there's only about, and like in the evening, there's sixty cars that enter and seventy that leave. So the number of people that come in and out at the at the rush time and people are coming and going is well less than the number of aqua spaces that we have, because there's just not a lot of turnover. So the thought is, is that the tandem spaces won't go anywhere on the average day. They might go out on a Saturday or maybe for a special occasion during the week. But those tandem spaces aren't, those cars may not move for a week or two. The the spaces are the ones where the turnover will be.
Right. So I I I I think I got that part. It's the, it's the tr- the transition into the sump principles over time. So I just want to make sure what you're saying is those purple spaces are dedicated to the office until such time as there are new leases in your office, and then discussions will happen about those spaces, at which point they will become open to students who may be parking, maybe storing their cars there, which will reduce it it kind of negates the assumptions of the sump idea, which is that there's a natural daytime e- evening transition of cars, because the students will not be using their cars during the day.
I don't believe that's our intention, is to say that it's shared usage. We're saying that it's, that it's unbundled, managed, and paid for. It's not that we're saying that there's a diurnal shift from one user to the next in this condition.
Right, okay. But that, but that diurnal shift, it, and I appreciate that phraseology, that is kind of an underlying assumption of the shared unbundled. So I'm just trying, I'm really just trying to get clarity. And I I think I have some now, because this is, this is the thing I think I'm most challenged by.
Yeah.
By this otherwise really interesting project. So I appreciate the clarification.
So I I have a a question to follow up on on Sarah's, and that is oh, can you state very clearly that you won't be unbundling in the unbundling process? You won't be uh charging for the same parking space to two different uh people, one in the office and one in the residential?
I- i- if I'm understanding the question correctly, that 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 is, that is the intentions. We we wouldn't have two separate leases. It it would be, it would create an opportunity in the future that, it's say, in one of those purple spaces, an office user wants to rent one of those for normal, normal business hours, say, uh seven AM to six PM. Outside of those hours, it could become guest parking for for a resident, right? So so that that's more of the the sharing that we're talking about. We wouldn't have a separate lease associated with that. Unless, for example, there was a resident in the building who used their car every day and they had no, you know, intention of, you know, meeting that between the same business hours. And that does create an opportunity where you can have two leases on on one space. So that's going to be rare. I don't think that's going to necessarily, you know, happen at this point, but that could be an opportunity in in the future. But we we envision that, um you know, once they get unbundled and paid and future lease negotiations and things of that nature. Um yeah, they they really just become open spaces for um, you know, for guest parking, if 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 becomes uh, you know, any sort of demand for it.
Thank you. Other questions? Mark?
I'm going to move away from parking with a couple very mundane little questions. What is in, what are the amenities in the amenity space? Uh that's at the ground level near the entrance? Yeah, and and even more mundane is uh, where's the laundry?
Uh I'll start with laundry. So we we do in-unit laundry in all of our units. Um so washer dryer uh within, within each unit. Um yeah, and so, you know, to talk about the amenity um programming here, um so really, you know, tremendous opportunity to create activity at at the pedestrian level. Um so, you know, as as Adrian mentioned, we've got the um, you know, the the portal through, which is a double high space that uh will be open air to take you through into the internal of the building, will be um access control. But as you get into that portal, you can go left into um, you know, what we call our commons. And so, you know, that will be um, you know, a space that, it's it's a multifunctional space. So that, you know, for our student residents in our communities, um that could be, um, you know, it it's a hangout space. It's during the day, it's a study space during finals, everyone's crammed in there studying. So um, you know, all different kinds of seating opportunities in there, and you have to be a multifunctional space. It's really what it's meant to be. Um, you know, we we typically put, you know, sort of a coffee offering in there to to create even more activity there for, you know, for our tenants. Um and so that'll be through the breezeway into the left, and then to the right would be our um, our leasing um, you know, leasing office. Um but we do have a mezzanine space there, so we're we're still playing out exactly how much programming goes in there, but it's sort of a um, you know, if there's enough space in the mezzanine for the full leasing, um, you know, function. Um, you know, maybe essentially additional many space. So it's, yeah, think about it, it's called co-working, or it could be a lounge, could be um fun and games. So we're we're still working through um sort of the true programming, but that's really the 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 vision is to kind of create all this activity at the ground floor, at the entrance, that can spill out to uh the exterior side. So spill out to uh a beautiful patio space there with exterior seating, um great visibility in the courtyards. And then as you get further into the building, the one space to the north of that is our our fitness um fitness center, uh as well as yoga. Um sometimes we do serve spa amenities as well. Uh there will be some study alcoves spread, you can see on the east side um uh as well. And then going up, up the building, um, you know, one of the things Adrian mentioned was the the internal stairwell that that we do have. It's actually going to be an exterior stair to promote um using the stair versus using the elevators. Um so hopefully our tenants are coming in, taking their bike down to the basement with a little side ramp, and then taking the stairs up to their, up to their unit. Um we'll have another uh another amenity, interior amenity on the roof deck. Um that'll have great views to the mountains, and then um a a pool and hot tub, uh which will be um kind of have those great portals through through the mesh screen that that Adrian and team have really envisioned here. Um so, yeah, Adrian, and and if there's anything else you can add to there.
Think that about generally.
Okay, uh Emma, did you have a question?
Thank you. Um my questions have evolved as people uh get them answered. So I I do have um one parking question. Sorry to bring that up again, but a- and it's a general question. Uh you talk about, you've had history uh managing these tandem with the idea of students and storing cars rather than actually using them on a regular, on a daily basis. Um so what I'm curious about is, have, do you have history doing this and sharing with an office space? Because the thing that I um wonder about is, well, we all know students, we all know young people. You know, that these purple areas are in fact going to be recognized as out of bounds or 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 whatever. So what is your um? Have you done it with an office building before and and have those um separations been successful?
Uh yeah, we so we we do have a number of other mixed-use properties. Uh and and so the the tandem spaces will will strictly be reserved or not reserved, but that's not the right word, but strictly be leased to the student residents. So um, so I, yeah, that that shouldn't be a problem. Um but yeah, we'll 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 take access control between the two uses, you know, very seriously, um just from a, from a building safety perspective. Um since all of these spaces will be leased, we'll be able to give people an access control, whether it's a card or a fob. Um, since all of these spaces will be leased, we'll be able to give people an access control, whether it's a card or a fob. Um, there's a lot of different technology out there. Um, so we'll, we'll be kind of access controlled between the two uses. Um, and, and so that you can't, you know, if you're, if you're, you know, so someone visiting the office space that you can't actually get up into the residential building. As we take those safety concerns very, uh, very seriously. Um, so, so yeah, that'll, that'll be, uh, you know, a big component of, of the project. But yeah, essentially, you know, they, they will be kind of fully separated.
Um, so my last uh comment is really a, a general comment. And uh, this just sort of speaks to the presentation that Adrian did, was showing us the transformation of the building over time. Um, I really appreciate that the design evolved based on the inputs that were given by the previous. Um, meetings and whether it was staff or public or the board itself. It was great to see that the comments, I think, really did help make a pretty successful building. And I applaud you for um taking, you know, the, the comments and the input from. Uh, other boards and this board and the staff to heart and making meaningful. Making some meaningful moves with your, with your structure uh on that. You know, the only thing that I would, I would add to the conversation here, which um doesn't really fall into necessarily. Uh, the issues that we have purview over, but it's, you know, the talk of. Making accommodations for EVs or electric bikes. I'm not sure if that, well, I know the EV is, you have a requirement of a certain percent, but electric bikes. Um, I, I think that it'll be interesting to see what will these people do. I mean, there will be people here with electric bikes. I don't think that that's an if. And uh, how will that get accommodated? How will that play out? And maybe that's a matter of, you talked about studying that, I'm not sure what that, what that means in. Is, is that like between now and the time that, you know, the electric plan goes in? Um, and then I also saw that, um, you know, as far as things like solar. Um, that it will accommodate future solar, but is there any thought at, that you would actually um? Install some solar on this project as part of the get-go?
Well, yeah, yeah, so to, to, to hit on the, the, the solar real quick, just at, at the, so the tail part of that. So um, yeah, per, per the Boulder Energy Code, we do need to install solar from day one to meet a certain percentage of our energy needs. Um, or ultimately, energy consumption for the property. So uh, yeah, our, our rooftop space here, um, you know, will have solar panels. Uh, installed uh at the very beginning of the project to meet, meet energy code requirements, uh, which are um, you know, really sort of been. On the forefront across the nation. Uh, Boulder's energy code is really, really progressive and um, yeah, we will be installing them from day one, yeah.
And will they just be um given, you know, on a flat roof, just angled up on a frame? Is that what you're thinking?
Uh, typically, y- yeah, so we, we do have a, a lot of roof space, uh, you know, across the building and um, great exposure.
Right.
So, right, so it, uh, yeah, we, we'll, you know, we, we, we're already in the process of engaging. Um, you know, handful of different consultants to be able to, to work through that process. Um, but, but yes, uh, generally it would be uh utilizing the rooftop space in the, the most efficient capacity.
Excellent. Um, so my other question, this has to do with materials. Um, have you done any work with the materials of the building regards to. Their um environmental impact or carbon um embodied carbon or any of those sorts of. Of uh climate action. Issues.
A- Adrian, I don't know if you want, want to hit on that at, at all.
Uh, not really, but uh Ryan, I'm gonna let you take that one.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for your question, ML. Trying to get the video to start. There we go. Um, yeah, so the materials in the building are uh definitely. Environmental concerns are considered for sure. Um, at this stage, we have kept it fairly generic. To allow um for some flexibility in the design, but um. But environmental concerns in regards to shading of the glazing areas, shading of the rooftop deck. Um, kind of passive, passive strategies for keeping the building cool are definitely part of. The design, as you can see, both for the public amenities zones and for the uh balconies. And living room glazing at the units.
I think we're also looking at longevity of material and um maintenance and keeping the building relatively maintenance-free. Is another key consideration.
Yeah, solid foundation of brick and, and traditional materials of metal and wood, so.
I see composite panels. So do you actually have wood panels versus composite panels or are they?
We're uh looking into composite materials that uh have a low embodied carbon um footprint. So uh, wood has uh, you know, maintenance concerns that uh Adrian kind of touched on. So um composite materials that are environmentally conscious are, are in the palette here.
Right. Thank you for that. Uh, I guess the um, the. Bottom line question would be, are, are you tracking any, your carbon, uh, your embodied carbon or your. Uh, life cycle of the materials. I know it's not a requirement at this point, but I'm just curious as to um. What your thoughts are about that at the building, at the whole building scale and at the contribution that the building. Uh, makes to the um. Climate warming and that sort of thing, given that buildings play such a big role.
Yes, of course. Um, that's definitely part of our interest in this project and, and as a firm. And I think Rob can also speak to Core Spaces and, and their sustainability mission. Um.
Kind of jump in a little bit, but uh, yeah, so, so you know, like kind of our process here, once uh, if, if you get for long in the process. Um, you know, we, we'll be engaging a uh, I guess a handful of energy consultants will be doing energy modeling for the project. Uh, to evaluate different building systems, uh, kind of the, the pros and cons of energy efficiency. Uh, payback periods, things like that. But we're, we're really, you know, focused on this as, of course, this is a firm. Um, I, you know, just, you know, generally ESG initiatives, but highly focused on the sustainability aspect. Um, that are both, you know, good for the community, but, but ultimately make financial sense as well. Um, so we're, we're constantly evaluating it. Um, and, and for this particular project, uh, to meet the Boulder Energy Code requirements. Um, you're, you know, essentially already meeting lead requirements. So I think a lot of the things you're hitting on are components of. Uh, of the lead certification process. So it's something that, that we're looking into, if it makes sense for, for this particular project. Um, can't necessarily make any commitments here today, but um, yeah, th- those are things that, um, that, that we do across our portfolio. Whether it's a lead certification, whether it's natural, natural, or natural green building standards. Um, so both things that we're looking at. Um, evaluating and um, you know, will, will likely be something that, that gets put in place for, for this project.
I'd like to just add one more thing, that the embodied carbon in the materials cannot be seen out of the context, out of the carb, of the carbon that's not being used. In, and having ninety-six four-bedroom units that are being served really by bicycles and not cars.
Um, so last but not least, in all this whole thing, we've got existing structures on the site. Are you planning to deconstruct?
That would be part of the requirements of building um on this site, yes. It's part of the city's requirements.
Right, but it doesn't, it, there is a, there is an option to, to pay a fine.
I don't believe we're planning on paying a fine. I don't believe that's part of the mission here.
I, I like that. I like the um consciousness that is going into this. And I really appreciate, as I said, the evolution of the design to accommodate the concerns that were brought up along the way. And um, thank you for, it looks like a, a, a very fine project. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further questions from planning board? I can mention that uh the applicant will have a chance, three minutes to respond. Uh, to any issues raised here and, you know, in the public uh session that is coming shor- shortly. So uh, so we don't need to wrap up every last item right now. So, thank you. I think we'll move to the public hearing portion of this uh, this uh session. Uh, Cindy, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Not yet, but if anyone is interested in speaking, please raise your hand and go down to the bottom of your screen. You should see a raised hand function. Click on that, please. And raise your hand and you'll be given three minutes to speak about this topic and only this topic this time. Folks, a few seconds here to raise their hands. Still don't see any raised hands.
Okay.
Oh, wait, 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 John. We did have a raised hand. Um, we have Lynn Segal. I'm going to unmute you Lynn and you should, and John, if you could mute your, thank you, John. You have some background noise. Um, Lynn, I'm gonna unmute you and you should be able to talk.
Good lord, I'm the only one in Boulder that wants to stop these kind of things. This is obscene. This is, the, this is. This is unspeakable, okay? You know, Dick Tharp had his way with Boulder already. With CU South in nineteen ninety-six, Liquor Mart, Horror Spaces from Chicago. Adrian Sofa, The Olive, you know, has Adrian, have these developers not been feeding at the trough with enough? It, when is enough enough? WW Reynolds, Steven Tebow, everyone else, and, and I'm gonna pay eight hundred and fifty dollars more. For property taxes every year. And where does this go? And, you know, this is obscene. You've got to stop this thing. And you need to stop it by stopping it at the planning. Level to start with. Because Elaine's just doing her job. This is so not okay. You know, this resort community in Boulder. It's Aspen and Boulder. You know, like Pace, like Balsam and Pearl, everywhere, all over town. You're, you're gonna wake up one day, you're, John, your father is gonna turn in his grave, you know? I, I knew Kurt, you know? He, he would, he would not approve of this kind of stuff. This is horrid. This is, this, he, he was instrumental in the blue line around Boulder. This, have you heard of the concept of inelastic demand? Folks will come. They will come from all over, okay? And if you're, if you're allowing CU to take over Boulder to this extent. I mean, I just saw the thing down the last month at um twenty nine, what is it? Uh, nine twenty, next to nine twenty on college, that big development. This is just completely inappropriate. Um, let's see. It's, it's not relieving Gos Grove, okay? Because there's inelastic demand. The jobs housing balance, for thirty-five years, it's been sixty thousand in commuters. It's not changing at all with all of these developments? How many people are gonna work at this resort community? This is a resort community. High, high-end resort community. Lots of low-income folks working it. And, and these parking spaces, the purple, are for three years. What happens after three years? They're gonna just drive in on the bus, right? With their families and all of the lost productivity time. That's what happens to the lower-income folks in our town. Cap enrollment, cap enrollment. That's the first thing you need to do as a responsible planning board.
Okay, thank you, Lynn.
Okay, oh, go ahead, John, I'm sorry.
Are there any, I don't see any other folks who want to speak. So I, I will bring to an end the uh, the public portion of this hearing. So, let's see, that uh, that brings us now to the time when uh. We can ask questions of either, the applicant may wish to respond to what uh has been said tonight. And thereafter, uh, planning board can ask questions of staff before we bring it home to discuss among ourselves. So does the applicant want to uh, uh, make any additional points?
Uh, with your permission, Mr. Chair, I, I think we'll wait and see if there are things that come up at the end of the, of your deliberation, but not at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, so colleagues, any questions of staff before we begin our discussion? All right, let's move into our discussion. Uh, we've been asked to uh, to deal with uh three major points tonight. One is whether the proposed project is consistent with the site review criteria. The second is whether the proposed ground floor residential facing a street meets the use review criteria. And whether the proposed solar exception is consistent with the standards. So I think uh, your thoughts on any or all of those are appropriate now.
Could we um, it'd be beneficial, I think, for, for us to put those up on the screen? Is that possible? Maybe cover them one at a time.
Let me uh pull them up. Hold on a moment.
Thank you. Uh, be- before we get into it, I, I did want to make one comment and thank Lynn for being our, our speaker consistently. Um, we appreciate you showing up and, and, and speaking uh your perspective. It doesn't go unheard. Thank you.
You know, wh- while we're commenting on, and I, I, I have commented uh to Lynn personally and in meetings both. Lynn, I don't think you do yourself any favors by invoking uh John's father's name in your. Uh, in your arguments. And uh, I didn't like that, but I'm not speaking for John. Speaking for myself, I don't think you do yourself any favors with that.
John, I think you were speaking, but we could not hear you.
Thank you. I, I was so intelligent, you missed it all. But uh, Sarah, uh, do you want to start us off with a key issue?
I'll speak to key issue number one and as you all can tell, my primary. My primary concern about key issue number one was, is the parking, um, which. Uh, because of the request for an additional five percent over the fifty percent parking reduction that. Staff can request from the city manager. I just wanted to get some clarification. I, I continue to have concerns about um the uh assumptions. That somehow. Car storage will, will magically not be a problem when it comes to uh. The need for, oh, overtime for office parking, but um. You know, I, I, I appreciate that the, the applicant has added fifteen additional spaces on the street, which I think. Does help meet uh, uh, nine dash two dash fourteen H two L. Um, require, one of the requirements. Um, so I'm not gonna oppose it on, on. Uh, the, on parking. So I, I think they didn't. I, I, I think it'll be interesting over time to see what actually happens. Uh, but um, I, I'm not gonna oppose it. So from my perspective, on balance, it does meet the site review criteria.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other thoughts? Lisa?
Yeah, I agree. Um, I, I really appreciate the robust conversation. I was a bit quieter because a lot of the things I had to say or ask questions about were. Already being well-asked and discussed. Um, I appreciated seeing it the first time we saw it. I appreciate it coming back now and I agree that on balance, it does meet the site review criteria.
Okay, other thoughts? Mark, uh, George?
Uh, yeah, um, I, I agree. It, it meets the site grade criteria. I particularly appreciated the, the open space, um, and the layout, uh, of the, the project itself. I want to make one comment, which is I, I don't necessarily think that it's beneficial to Boulder to even accommodate this many cars for students. I think that, um, it, it potentially impacts the affordability of a project like this for students because, um, these parking spaces will go for a premium. And I think we're incentivizing the wrong behavior here, uh, by having additional car storage. That doesn't mean it doesn't meet the criteria. And so, uh, that's my comment, but I, I agree with the other, my other colleagues. Thank you.
Laura?
Uh, so to address the concern that students will park in those office spots once they are unbundled. I guess I, I, I'm hoping the applicant maybe can address this when it's their time to speak again. But my assumption has been that there would be some kind of time-of-day requirements, uh, where students would not be able to park in some of the spaces during the day, even after the three years have expired. Otherwise, I think Sarah is right that, you know, students will simply park in those spaces and block them off long-term and use them as car storage. So, uh, I, I trust the applicant has experience managing this and maybe we just haven't discussed that piece of the plan yet. But, um, but I do think that they will want to, in some way, protect some amount of parking unbundled, not assigned parking, but for, for office uses at some point. I want to say that I do like the idea of the tandem spaces. I think that they, uh, allow students to have a car for when it is needed and discourage everyday use. You make it inconvenient and you create a structural barrier to casual, do I want to get on my bike and go to Sprouts or do I want to walk to Sprouts? And if it's a pain in the butt to move your car, pardon, pardon my casual language, then I think some students will more often make the choice to walk. So I really like tandem parking and I think that we should do more of it, um, because it does create that structural barrier. I do think that on balance, the project meets the site review criteria, uh, as asked in key issue one. And I just, um, I really, really love the fact that this is a site that is so close to the university and we have such a strong need for student housing. And the applicant has seen that and responded to that and tried to do it in a way that, that really does meet the city's goals in terms of, um, transportation, demand management, uh, and, uh, and all of the good things. So, um, yes, I'm a yes on key issue one. It does, on balance, meet the site review criteria.
Oh, okay. Any, any other thoughts? ML?
I don't have any lingering concerns about the site review. I agree with, um, the, I guess, thought about the office and its parking requirements into the future. It, it seems to me like, uh, there is a, a potentially incompatible use in that, in that, that parking area. With allocating proper amount of parking for an office outside or beyond. You know, do you have a lease and where is that lease set and when is it going to expire? Uh, you know, offices just, they tend to have, and especially if it's a medical office or a, uh, you know, a, a personal services office, people are going to arrive by car. Perhaps more so than they, than they, than the students' needs are. So I think that the attention to the fact that it's a mix with an office space should be very clear. And that's really been, that's, that's my main, uh, ongoing thought about it meeting. I think it meets the land use code, um, but I just think that that piece, um, it's kind of uncomfortable.
Okay, Mark, did you have some thoughts?
I, I do. Um, uh, I want to say in overall, I, it, in answer to the simple question, yes, I, I do think overall it meets the, um, site review criteria. And I'm not sure, uh, if I'm proposing a, a condition or not. But I, um, I do have concerns that the TDM plan and is, is not forward-looking enough in terms of too many, like George said, too many private vehicles. There's no, nothing in the plan for, um, shared rental vehicles. You know, I, I could envision with three hundred and eighty-four students that you might have somewhere between five, ten, fifteen vehicles of different varieties that, uh, would be available to check out, rent, you know, shared mobility services that, um, would further facilitate students arriving at CU and not bringing a car and just bring, maybe they bring a conventional bike and they say, hey, I'm going to, you know, the building I'm moving into has, uh, a couple SUVs for skiing on the weekend or it has, uh, a truck if I'm doing an art project that I can rent. Anyway, there, there, there's, I don't see a current accommodation for shared vehicles. I, I think the, um, the bike storage, uh, is, it's certainly not fleshed out enough that I can have much of an opinion about it. But I do know that even, um, when you go around town as a, as a cyclist with a heavier e-bike, a longer, a cargo bike, et cetera, that most many, uh, bike parking accommodations don't accommodate the kind of bike or the trend that we're seeing in bikes of, uh, of heavier bikes, longer bikes, and bikes that are truly replacing people's car full-time. And so you end up with, um, bike parking that just doesn't, doesn't work for the number of bikes that a designer would say, this rack accommodates twelve bikes and there's no, there's no way in the world you can get twelve bigger, heavier, longer bikes in, in that particular space. I'm also concerned about just if the infrastructure isn't there, if it's not pre-wired, if it's not, uh, set up for, uh, charging of bikes, of cars, of rental vehicles, that, um, you know, ten years out, we're, we're talking about, you know, uh, auto manufacturers saying ten years out, they will not be building, uh, a car with a, uh, with a fossil fuel engine. They'll, they'll be all-electric. Many car manufacturers have, have predicted that. And, and I expect the owners of this building, the applicants are looking for a thirty, forty, fifty, sixty-year life on this building. And, uh, I think we need to be thinking more about that. So I would encourage, uh, a modification to the TDM plan and let the applicant, um, be creative, but I, 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 I need to be convinced that the TDM plan is forward-looking enough.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, have I missed anyone else giving them a chance to say what they think? I think we've all talked. I'll, I'll say what I, I think. I would say that I, I agree with George and Mark's, uh, comments and, and Sarah's comments about the parking, uh, very much. But I am, uh, I am somewhat mollified by the fact that this is unbundled parking. And so that, uh, it's not a matter that these parking spaces will be, be provided without costs to the, to the ultimate users, uh, and I think that's the way it should be. So I am willing to go along with, uh, with the plan as proposed by the applicant on, on those issues. Otherwise, I, I think it does meet the, the criteria that we're asked to deal with. Uh, but my other comment is that it may be that, uh, Mark and, uh, George, you may want to offer, when it comes time to, to vote on this, you may want to offer some amendments that would, uh, address your concerns. Okay, shall we move to key issue two?
Yeah, I, I want to point out some, some quick math that I was thinking about, um, directionally, which is these fifty spaces and when you net them out from the one sixty-eight to the one fifty-two, plus the fifty is really like forty-six spaces. If you were to think of that from a developer perspective, um, I'm not sure what each one of these spaces rents for. Uh, I don't know if it's three hundred dollars a month or something to that effect. But if you do, if you use three hundred dollars a month, which may be incorrect, you multiply that by twelve by forty-six and multiply that by a cap rate of what multifamily is going for in our town. That's an extra, somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four and a half million dollars of profit for the developer, uh, which is fine. But I think Boulder, if we see more tandem spaces, we need to recognize that this is not necessarily parking. This is storage. And storage is different than useful parking that people need on a, on a regular basis. And I don't see where Boulder benefits from an affordability standpoint by providing this additional benefit that's truly more storage than parking. So it's something for us to consider, um, as we think about these things and structures and finances behind these things and how, um, Boulder might take a look at providing additional affordability, not only through the twenty-five percent on housing, but making sure benefits like this, um, once you understand the math behind them, can potentially benefit Boulder through some additional affordability requirements. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, let's move ahead on key issue number two. Does the proposed ground floor residential, uh, space facing the street, street meet the use review criteria? Thoughts? Mark?
I was not going to speak, I was just saying, sure.
Oh, okay. Laura?
Uh, I was persuaded by staff's presentation, which I thought was well-done, that, um, in this context, given the retaining wall across the way and given what is, uh, surrounding this property, I have no concerns about these six ground floor residential units. I think they do meet the, uh, use review criteria that would allow these to, to be in this position.
Okay, any other thoughts? I'm looking, I can't quite see everybody's hands, so that's why I'm hesitating. Oh, Sarah?
No, no, I'm thumbs up.
Okay. All right, so let's talk about the, uh, the solar exception. Is that acceptable? Is that consistent with standards? Sarah?
Uh, yeah, because the standard is about, um, in, in that particular, uh, solar access area is about, um, the rooftop of the impinged building being able to, uh, access solar in the future. I think that the, um, the, uh, slight exception is well within the what meets the criteria. Because it just affects the, the parking lot.
Okay, any other thoughts? Anybody else?
I agree with Sarah.
Okay. And, uh, I don't see anyone else raising their hand, so we'll leave it at that. Okay. Now, the applicant had asked if he could respond to following our discussion, so now's the time. If, if you have anything you want to say.
I'll just start out, I'm sure that there are other people in our team who might have something to say, but I think some of the, the details that, uh, Board Member McIntyre is bringing up though are, are terribly relevant, but not necessarily, in my mind anyway, at a site review phase, we will undoubtedly be addressing all of the things that you're, you're raising in relation to our tech docs submitted. Um, and Sharon, I don't know if you want to address this, Brad, if you had some thoughts, but I, I believe in terms of the criteria established in this, under the site review guidelines, that we meet those. And I don't mean to be stickler in any way, but that's my understanding. Anybody wants to help me out, please go right ahead. Sharon?
Uh, no, I was just gonna concur that we've had the conversation about longer bike, bike parking during tech docs on previous projects, including the North Boulder Library project. So while we're placeholder in a lot of things in site review, a lot of those semantics get worked out per the code and per the tech doc review when we get really into the nuance. So I think it's, it's the stuff you're bringing up and on our radar.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so now it remains for us to, uh, to vote on this. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion so we can start any discussion.
Okay.
A motion to approve site and use review case number LUR two oh two one dash zero 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 two four, incorporating the staff memorandum and the attached site review and use review criteria checklists as findings of fact and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum.
All right.
Sarah, may I interrupt you and just say that at some point you started getting kind of quiet like a while ago? And if you have a mic or can point toward it a little, thanks.
Okay, so do I need to repeat the motion?
Nope, you're good. I, I think it's in the record solid. I just was giving you a heads up.
Thank you very much.
I just want to clarify, Sarah, what you just read or intended to read was the motion that's on the screen right now, verbatim. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's what we, that's, that's what we do. We read it verbatim and then, uh, if you want to offer up a condition, motion for a condition, then we can have a discussion around that.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that you, you were proposing the motion as, as stated verbatim. I, I, I think you missed the word or I didn't hear the word, including the solar exception. And so I just, I just wanted to make sure I heard.
So that I, I believe, and I, I don't want to get us off track, but the, we were asked to address the three questions, which we did. And so that means we move to the, I mean, we move now then to the motion, uh, which has a series of conditions which we don't read out loud. And if you want to propose an additional addition, we can do that at this.
Sarah, I think I can clarify this issue.
Thank you.
I think, uh, Sarah probably read, read the recommended motion language from the memo and Mark is reading the recommended motion language on the screen. And in between the publishing of the memo and then preparing the slides, Elaine added a specific reference to the solar exception as part of the recommended motion.
So, Hella, do I need to read the new motion? I'm sorry, I was reading from the memo that we had.
Yeah, or you could just say that, uh, that you intend the motion as it's shown on the screen, including the language of, including the solar exception.
Okay.
And I think we all understand it.
Okay, as long, it just needs to be in the record, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, revising the, the recommendation, uh, the motion for site review approval that is on the screen, which includes, uh, the attached site review criteria and use review checklist as finding a fact, well, and subject to the condition, uh, conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum. Does that meet the need, meet what we needed to do, Hella?
Uh, it's actually, it starts out with motion to approve site and use review application case number LUR twenty twenty-one dash zero 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 twenty-four, including the solar exception. So it's this including the solar exception part that I think you're trying to incorporate. And, uh, as it's shown on the, on the screen right now, and I think with that it's clear enough and, and
How about if we do this?
We'll be working on it.
To our secretary, Cindy, are you, you know what it is that, the motion that I'm putting on the table?
Sure do.
Okay.
Okay. All right, do we have any, uh, seconds?
I will second. Oh, you can let George do it.
No, no, Laura, Laura, please second, it's your, your first night.
My first second, yay!
My first second, yay!
You're in, okay. So, discussion? Any proposed amendments or friendly or otherwise? Okay, in that case, let's take a vote. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand and let us see who you are. Any opponents?
Hella, do we need to do a voice vote for this?
Yes, I was just gonna say that because we're in the virtual environment, the rules require a voice.
Okay. All right. Mark, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Sarah?
Aye.
Laura?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
ML?
Yes.
Lisa?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. So, that completes our assignment for this evening. Um, do we have any, uh, other matters from staff?
Uh, the only thing that we just wanted to let you know is that we are gonna be doing some trainings coming up here. Thank you all, thank you applicants.
Thank you, bye-bye.
For coming, congratulations, thanks so much. Um, we just wanted to mention to you that we will be doing some few trainings, um, in the near future here, over the next few months, um, regarding permanently affordable housing, flood, and transportation planning. So, uh, don't have dates or anything like that, but just so you can know that we are gonna be doing some of those to kind of, uh, have those on your radar and, and know that, uh, to give you some comfort level on those topics. And, other than that, I've got nothing.
Okay. Hella, you look like you're about to tell us something.
No, but I have nothing from the city attorney's office.
Okay.
Great meeting tonight.
All right. Well, thank you and congratulations to new colleagues. Are there any matters from planning board that, uh, we wanna talk about? Okay. With that, I'll bring this meeting to a close. Thank you.
Thanks, John, thanks for sharing, and congratulations, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Thank you.